Stand by, 20 seconds. Welcome, Market City Commission Agenda, Monday, August 26, 2013. Meeting called to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protam Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here. Let the record show all seven Commissioners present, City Clerk. Commissioners, note of any agenda changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Stonehouse, to approve the agenda. It's presented, all in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you. This is the time where I'll have to do some announcements for current openings on volunteer committees and boards, agent services, advisory committee, one opening, that's a housing representative, arts and culture advisory committee, three openings, harbor advisory committee, one opening, housing commission, one opening, local officers compensation commission, two openings, Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, one opening, parks and recreation advisory board, one opening, planning commission, two openings, police fire pension board, one opening, regional recreation authority business plan ad hoc committee, one alternate opening, sister city advisory committee, four openings, and traffic parking advisory committee, three openings. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to number one, public hearing, rates for light and power for the Board of Light and Power, Mr. Chair, then Ed Angeli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a second, Ed. We're going to have the City Clerk give us a little background, but you stay right where you're at.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at the August 12, 2013 Commission meeting, the BLP presented the cost of service rate study for a three-year period. The BLP's executive director and its professional consultant, Utility Financial Solutions LLC, provided the City Commission with technical information that supported the BLP's request for a rate increase. The proposed increase would average eight and a half percent each year during 2014, 2015, and 2016. The BLP adopted the new rate structure at their meeting on July 30, 2013. The BLP and City Commission met again on August 19, 2013, in a joint work session to discuss the rate design. According to City Charter, Section 11-7C, which states that "The Board of Light and Power shall have the power and authority to fix all rates for light and power, subject to confirmation by the City Commission, which rates shall become effective 30 days after such confirmation." Fiscal effect, as reflected in the rate schedule, recommendation, confirm the BLP's rate design adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their July 30, 2013, meeting for the periods 2014, 2015, 2016, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Mr. Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're here tonight to request confirmation of the rate increase. We have showed the numbers, we've gone over the figures, we've studied it, we've had professionals study it. If there was a better way, another way, trust me, we would take it. The mistakes that have been made in the past, I can accept responsibility for. I cannot and will not accept responsibility to move forward making the same mistake again. We need to make the rate increase because this utility needs that cash to operate on a day-to-day basis. It's that simple. The 8.5 percent for the next three years was the lowest number we could come up with to make it work. We tried other avenues, we thought about, could we move it back to a start date of January 1st, for example? The City Charter does not allow for that. We asked both attorneys for a workaround, just not something that can be done. I'm more confident than ever tonight that what we're doing is the right thing. It's not the easiest thing, but it's the right thing. Your utility has currently one of the cheapest rates in power in the state of Michigan. It's second on this comparison of residential rates. You can see by in the arrow, when we move our rates, we'll still be in the top five. That's even if no one else raises their rates. That's not going to happen. Their rates are going up as we speak. You saw it, I saw it, and it's just a fact of life that it's going to be that way. We need to stabilize our finances so the utility can move forward and keep doing what we do best, and that's providing the cheapest, most reliable power in upper Michigan. You know, one of the things we talk about is, if you get this money and this rate is confirmed, what will you do with it? For me to explain it to you, you have a machine that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Our youngest, our newest machine, is 30 years old. As it gets older, we will need to spend more money on maintenance, on repairs, and on replacement. The utility in the UP is the best that we have, the best that you have, the best anywhere. Not only is it the cheapest rate, but it is the most reliable. Today, last night, we had storms, we had power outages, we had our people out there all night long and got most of our customers back on in a couple, three, I think, four hours, something like that was the longest they were out. It's what we do, it's what we have to do, it's what's expected of us. That's why the utility needs the rate increase. You know, there's been a lot of people that sat in my chair before me that have had to make strong, tough decisions. 30 years ago, 35 some years ago, they made a decision to put a power plant down in the lakeshore. That was probably one of the hardest decisions the utility ever made. This is the hardest one I've ever made sitting in this seat. I don't take it lightly, but I know it's the right decision. If you look around at some of the boards we've brought for you, the things that we do on a day-to-day basis, not wish lists, but things that have to be done on a day-to-day basis to keep the utility running, it's an expensive operation. There's no other way around it. The monies in this rate increase will allow us to position the utility for the future. What will we do in the future? We have no idea. We have a lot of things we want to do, but this utility, in this environment, is going to have to change with the times as they change. I could stand here for a long time and tell you a lot of things, but you know all the facts, you know all the figures. The bottom line is, we need the rate increase to keep the utility going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Angeli. At this time, I'll open this portion to the public for public comment. I know there's going to be a lot of people that probably want to make comments, so what I'll do is, I'll give you three minutes per person, and when you come up to give your speech at this lectern, please state your name and physical address. Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Sir?
Hi, my name is John Krukowski. I am a resident of this community. I live at 249 West Ridge Street, but I'm basically here tonight representing market area public schools. What I passed out to you tonight was a spreadsheet that basically indicates to you the impact of these increases over the next three years. Bottom line is, is that if you look at the top lines, those are the heavy meter usages. It's not until you get out until year three that our rates, for some of our buildings, actually below that, far below that 8.5 percent that has been brought up from time to time, which indicates to me that basically the commercial accounts are really going to pay for the upgrades that this utility is seeing, if you take a look at that. In the first column, we have two accounts that are actually at 8.67 percent, our next four accounts are at 9.25 percent, and then finally, we have two more accounts that are at 10.08 percent. Those are substantial increases, well above the 8.5 that's been talked about, and I think it's just important to note that. The impact, again, over the three-year period is about $113,000 to MAPS. That's equivalent to about three teachers without benefits, or about two teachers with benefits. It's equivalent to 27 percent of the athletic account, it's equivalent about 27 percent of our technology account, and it's equivalent to about 30 percent of our Title I account. There's no question in my mind, if this were adopted tonight, MAPS has to do some forward thinking in terms of how we're going to absorb this additional increase at such a large percentage. We're not talking 2% or 4%, we're talking 8.5 percent. Computed for MAPS, it's about 28.03 percent over three years, and it is a concern of the district. We have to figure out how we're going to absorb that payment in that short period of time. I don't know that I have anything else that I would like to add at this point, but just for you to consider the figures that I presented to you and understand the impact that it is going to have on our organization like MAPS, and we are by far not the largest commercial account in the city of Marquette, nor for the Board of Light and Power. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
Good evening, you're in Malanquinian Market Drive. I had the distinct pleasure of being at the Monday meeting of last week at Board of Light and Power. One of the things that, I'll make it a little bit more lighter, is they had refreshments, and maybe the City Commission would like to consider refreshments as well. It was kind of a neat thing. But anyways, aside from that, it's always painful to have rate increases. Is it more painful to be in the dark? There are other communities that are in the dark a lot more than we are, or we ever will be. In the paper this past week, there was another power company with their 8.1 percent increase, give or take, and their average monthly bill for their customer was $26 versus $4.05 for the residential customer, and I'm sure their commercial rate reflects that as well. And so, we still have the best rates in our community. The alternative is, in some respects, will you be happy if you have five hours of blackout, eight hours of blackout, or 10 hours of blackout, or 50 hours of blackout? My parents, that are up in Big Bay, they have blackouts on a regular basis because the trees fall down, and so they're eight hours, nine hours, 10 hours at a time. In the past 30 years, actually, the past five years, I have an automatic power system. We've been out 23 hours altogether, which is not bad in five years, and that is due to the aging system. There's a transformer in Shires that keeps popping out when we have some storms, and so they replace it, and so it's off at half hour, 45 minutes, or whatever, and so in five years, it's added up to about 23 hours total, which still is not bad, but it shows you that the system, prior to that, we hardly ever had power outages, but the system is getting more mature, just like all of us are getting more mature, and we need to fix our aches and pains, and same with the power company, they need to fix their aches and pains as well. And so, having not had any increases for the past three years, which they should have, and they were looking at being kind to the community, and unfortunately, being kind to the community wasn't beneficial for the Board of Light and Power itself, and now they have to take that hit.
30 seconds, sir.
Thank you. They still need the $11 million to pay their bills, so I urge you not to put our city in the dark. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the City Commission at this time?
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Art Gishah, 11180 County Road CF in Ishpeming, representing Northern Michigan University. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Commission regarding this proposed rate increase. Like all MBLP customers, NMU will be significantly impacted by this rate increase. I'll give you a little bit of history, what we've done to try to reduce our consumption. In the last three years, we have reduced annual consumption by 5.4 million kilowatt-hours. We've invested a significant amount of money to do that, and we look at our reduction in consumption as actually increasing the capacity of the Board of Light and Power. We're not using the power, that power is available for other users. In 2012, MBLP fuel adjustment, 15 percent, was passed along to the customers. That impact to Northern Michigan University was $213,000. Newer increases of eight and a half percent a year for three years, that's in excess of $200,000 a year for us, about $620,000 over three years. We have no alternatives to buying power except for a small generator that we put at our heating plant, and we have run that generator to its capacity, we know it'll work, and it'll take the edge off this rate increase, but not by a significant amount. Our fees come from students. We have a declining state revenue base, just like most of the city programs, depending on state revenues, they're declining. So our increases are going to have to be borne by students. In addition to that, this increase is coming after we have started our fiscal year. We had no opportunity to plan for this. So we would urge you to consider perhaps a single-year increase. I understand that Board of Light and Power is still working on their long-term strategic plan, and haven't really identified the need to have this eight and a half percent for three years. We can understand that they are a public utility and they have to meet their costs, and perhaps they haven't been aggressive as they should have been in the past in raising rates for consumers, but it's very difficult for us to try to absorb this, being that we're three months into the fiscal year already. So we would ask your consideration of that. And we'd, lastly, encourage the Board of Light and Power to modify their request accordingly. Listen to the concerns of the public here. We are your customers, and for most customers, there are no alternatives to buying power from the BLP. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Thank you, sir.
My name is Mike Pond. I live at 1500 West Avenue in Marquette. I come to you tonight because I've been watching the rate increase, and quite frankly, it's been my experience with several other utilities, and I just want to give you a couple. Consumers Energy, Newbury Water and Light, Nagani City, Great Lakes Energy, Wakefield City, Edison Salt, Potoski City, UP Power, and Eldrick Delta, are just a few of them I've dealt with. I can tell you that I've been more than happy with the rates that I've seen at Market Board of Light and Power. I think, as a personal consumer, I agree with the rate increase, and although I don't know the actual documentation of how the eight-point-some-percent increase has been verified, I do agree with the rate increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. August 12, the BLP presented a laundry list of recent expenditures, 2.8 million on a turbine, rising fuel costs, $4.8 million dam, $3.2 million for automatic meters, and this has depleted the reserve funds to low levels. However, 8 million of those are one-time expenditures. BLP representatives also mentioned over 2 million in savings and a staff reduction of three. The Commission has commended for considering the hardship of an eight-and-a-half percent rate increase for low-income people. We'll soon see if your concern holds. The 2010 increase seems like yesterday. Also, are you aware that many of the old rotary meters dragged? When the electronic ones were installed, some of us experienced noticeable increases. Although we're now paying for our actual usage, more money is leaving our pockets. We had two increases. One question is whether the BLP has accounted for the increased revenue as a result of the electronic meters. How much of the 3.2 million outlay will the BLP recover over the life of those meters? Another advantage for the BLP is Market's increasing density and foreseen development. This should allow for increased operating efficiency because the BLP is and will service more customers per foot of infrastructure. It's a wise idea to handle only one year's increase at this time and analyze the results in October 2014. A fact to consider when analyzing three years of eight-and-a-half percent increases is that year two and year three increases are additional percentages upon the previous year's percentages. The BLP may be trying to recover the recent investments too fast. Maybe 5 percent is a more reasonable increase and analyze the reserve fund level in one year. The BLP boasted the second-lowest rates in Michigan. This stands to reason because we're municipally owned. They also reasoned that township residents are paying more. They should because they're generally farther from the plant and they pay their taxes to a different municipality. More infrastructure is required for the power to reach them. A confusing point is why the plant's average demand is 40 percent of peak, yet they base the prices on peak. The BLP director is asked to explain these concerns after he stood here acting jovial on August 12 until he realized that the Commission was taking the impact of the proposed increases seriously. I do appreciate our municipally-owned utility and thank them for paying us dividends. However, our dividends are costing us more than ever, by Marquette standards, anyway. Please authorize a smaller increase for this year and defer any additional increases by one year. Let the Commission convene in the event of a major wind or ice storm. If you truly do understand the facts and figures, then do what you have to do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Peter Zenti, 2002 Werner. Was out by Rodsey Rock this afternoon by tourist park and was chatting with a lady walking her dogs that was coming to the Commission tonight to talk, and she said, gee, I wish I lived in Marquette. I live in Eldrick County, I get a $25 bill right off the top. So I'm here to support and encourage the rate increase for the future of Marquette. It's already been said that it's one of the lowest in the state. I think the long-term effect will be to maintain a cost-effective service to the community, and I think the management of their properties throughout the community enhances the health. They have open-door policy to the pristine wilderness and encourage mental and physical health by being out there and walking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time?
My name's Brian Fuller, and I live at 1408 West Avenue. I work at the Shire Steam Plant, been there for 14 years. Some of you Board members know me personally. Probably what might not have been brought up in the past is Warren Buffett got into the railroad, oh, probably three to five years ago, and impacted a 17 percent increase on transportation costs that every power plant had to absorb, and we're still reeling from that. You know, it's got to come from somewhere. Some of their aspect is I work in operations there, I've been in every aspect of the plant, and if other power plants were doing the same level of what we do, as clean as we do, their costs would be even more, and there'd be a bigger spread between us and them. Out of 2,000 coal-fired power plants, it's one of the cleanest in the nation and does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion to public comment. Turn it over to my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner Coyne.
I move that we suspend the rules so we can discuss before we deal with the motion.
I would second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme. There's a motion to suspend the rules on the agenda, one, Light and Power, for discussion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Neme. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passes, seven to zero. Commissioner Coyne.
I'd like to defer till later. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Neme.
I guess I have one question to start out with. I don't know if Chairman Angeli would want to address this, or maybe one of the attorneys, but you mentioned that the rate cannot be delayed. I guess I don't quite understand that.
I'll defer to the attorneys, but as I understand the Charter, it says we have to implement the rate 30 days after confirmation.
Right. But you, I guess you could have come and proposed a rate to us that would have taken effect at some other point in time, and asked us to approve it 30 days prior to that point of inception.
I don't know if that's possible. It's not the way it was explained to me, but I'm sure anything could be possible.
Okay. That's all I have at this point, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan?
Actually, I was prepared to offer a motion to approve the rate increase. 10 to 15 years ago, someone suggested, not someone, but several people suggested that perhaps we should consider selling the municipal power plant, and I was very strongly against that, as were a lot of other people. In fact, I think the majority of people in Marquette were opposed to that. And I think the bottom line is, if we're going to have a power plant, then we have to pay the bills. There's no other source of revenue for this power plant. This is the way they get the money they operate with. Personnel, fuel, replacement parts, possibly new generation, it all comes out of that rate we pay. When this came up, you know, I was determined that I would do my duty and that they would have to prove to me that this rate increase was needed, and I would say they have done that. No one likes a rate increase, and actually, my bill is twice what they said the average bill is. I'm not sure why a guy my age with two people living in the house has a power bill that size, but we do. So mine's going to go up, I don't know, $8 or $10, I'm not sure. The City Charter makes it clear that management of the BLP is under the direction of the Board elected for that purpose. By Charter, the City Commission has only one responsibility regarding our municipal utility, that's to approve rate increases or not approve them. To me, there are only two reasons for denying the increase. It's not needed, or the BLP is wasting their financial resources. It's clear it's needed, they're getting dangerously low on cash reserves. I think a number, for example, was thrown out that when a boat shows up, it costs maybe $3 million. And I certainly do not believe the BLP has wasted our financial resources. In fact, they are a well-run utility, and we can be very proud of that. You know, I've seen examples of publicly-owned utilities where they kind of keep them going and don't pay the upkeep, and then you reach a point where you're dead. And that's not happening here. You know, they want to keep it going, and they want to keep being able to operate at a very professional and very reliable level. If I were to issue any criticism, it would be for not increasing rates a year or two ago, and we covered that at the public session. I think it was well-intentioned, but it's put the utility in a serious predicament. Now, some have argued the increases should be delayed because of the budgeting problems it will cause for businesses, organizations, and individuals, and I understand that, I really do. I think this is a problem. But while it's a legitimate concern, delaying the increase is what caused this situation in the first place. If we had raised rates two years ago, we wouldn't be here, so this would only exacerbate the problem. Others have argued against approving a three-year rate increase, but that really misrepresents what the BLP has proposed. Their choice was to propose a much larger increase, probably double, in the first year, and what they've done instead is to phase it in over three years. This is the three-year phase-in, so it's doing what people have requested. As has been pointed out, the BLP rates are well below other utilities in the area and are among the lowest in the state. Even with the increase, that will still be true. While I really do empathize with those who have talked about the impact on their business or institution, it's important to remember that they are already enjoying the benefit of lower power rates, much lower power rates than people just 20 miles down the road, and they will continue. And they will continue to do so. I think this rate increase will provide the essential funding that will not only allow them to operate, but maintain a very complex system that includes not only generation, but distribution and transmission within the community. So I believe they've made their case. It's our job to decide whether or not they have, and I'm prepared to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, in follow-up, I have some similar remarks, but I don't agree fully. First, the Board of Light and Power belongs to the citizens of Marquette. And the Board of Light and Power members and the city commission members are our neighbors, our friends, and our customers of this organization. So this is not an adversarial type of thing. It's, I think we all want this to succeed. The Board of Light and Power did a very excellent job Monday explaining the major question that the commission had is, really, why do you need this? The first encounter we had with you at the city commission meeting, frankly, I did not understand really why you needed it. You made a very good case, and I think you convinced me why you need it. There's just no question you need it. You, the need for capital, and the, you're kind of, you know, if a oarboat and a half comes in and at the same time a boiler breaks, you're facing the financial cliff, basically. And you need this. And I think your rate consultant convinced me, at least, that that is indeed the case. So I think rate increases are essential. To follow up with Don, this is basically, I think, a great utility. You have great service and reliability. You have great employees. I think you have a great board and great management. And I really do think you need the money. I intend to support some motion this evening that would include that. I think the problem is, as Mr. Angeli said, that they have not raised the rates over a long period of time. The most recent one being three or four years ago, and that was fairly minimal. I just looked up and did the Consumer Price Index from 1998. And again, as many of you have jobs, often you get a cost of living increase, and that is based often on the Consumer Price Index. And since 1998, the Consumer Price Index has gone up 35%. Well, if people are saying, well, gee whiz, this is just terrible, you shouldn't raise rates. Well, I have the opposite, is I think it's terrible that you haven't raised rates because you're in a position now where you're asking for a lot, and in reality, you should have done it before. And that's just my opinion. I wish for the commission to consider a proposal. I hear businesses, universities, schools, individuals of both wealth and of poverty or fixed income, that this is a stress. I would like for us to consider approving a one-year 8.5% interest rate to take place. I'd consider a motion to that effect, but then table it until October 28th. And the reason is, I'd like this commission, not a commission in November, to have to deal with this. I don't want to shirk that responsibility. But it would basically delay the rate increase for 90 days. And you think, well, that doesn't sound like much. But if you're running an apartment complex, or a university, or a school district, that is a savings. And it also gives them a time to consider how to do this, rather than just 30 days from now. 30 days from now is pretty quick. I also, not sure that we have an adequate answer to Commissioner Neme's question. I don't see why the Board of Light and Power can't say, we will, we're asking for a rate increase as of January 1st. I don't have any problem with voting on that, but that's not what you asked for. But if we would consider the one-year eight and a half percent, but not vote on it until October 28th, then we would then grant the customer 90 days in order to do this. And I think that's minimal. I'd like it to be longer, if you would consider that. I think the reason, the next year after, the next two years after, I think Commissioner Campanzi and I were on the charter commission. And the charter, the new charter requires the city of Marquette to have a strategic plan in place by next year. The Board of Light and Power is part of the city of Marquette, and they also have to have a strategic plan. And why I think that's important is items such as increasing, a plan to increase the possible generating power that the Board of Light and Power has in order to meet possible economic development, which is very important to the city. We're concerned if an electronic firm comes here and says, well, how about electricity? And we say, well, we're kind of maxed out. We, you know, you can plug in an extension cord, but that's about it. You need to have a strategic plan in place, which I have not seen as a commissioner, and I don't think it's been done, for plans for increasing generation capability, the use of wind, solar, natural gas, the future of coal, the future of the Shira Steam Plant. I'm not sure what's happening there. 75% of the generated power there goes to a mine that is now buying it from somebody else. So they have an extreme excess of power. And I think that all needs to be taken into consideration before the Board of Light and Power asks us for a second and third-year rate increase. And I think those factors may either increase the rate or decrease the rate. I have no idea. But at least there then is a plan in place that we can then make a judgment to do what Commissioner Ryan said, is either say yes or no. So I would hope that my idea would give the ratepayers a little time to adjust. It would give the Board of Light and Power a first step to begin to do a strategic plan and really make, for a stronger economic base for the Board of Light and Power, which I think is extremely important to the city's continued growth. So thank you. I hope further discussion would go, we've got two different ideas here, and I hope we can discuss them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanzi?
Thank you. I have quite a few questions. And I guess the first question we did get...
Could you go up to the left?
A handout from the Marquette area public schools on what it's going to cost them. I know art is here. Do you have any estimates on these rate increases and what Northern will be paying over three years?
If I fail to mention it, I apologize for that. The impact over three years is $620,000.
Okay. Thank you. And if I could ask our management, I'd like to know, what is this going to cost the city of Marquette if this is approved in 30 days? And what does it look like after three years?
Thank you, Commissioner. It'll be approximately $100,000 a year for the next three years, so compounded, somewhere on the order of $320,000.
Okay. And I did check to see, the city of Marquette has a capital improvement program, and it's a plan where we actually log and keep track of exactly what shape our roads are in, the sewers, the water lines. And currently, we have 89.7 miles on that list. And as each year goes by, some of them get moved off, but I would, I would guess that more of them get moved on. Now, if the city of Marquette said, we have all these miles of roads to fix, and we want to get ahead, we want to go for it and basically get it all done at once, I'm guessing that we would need well, well more than the 22.8 million. But this isn't reasonable for our community to ask them to take a big hit with their taxes so that we can get ahead and feel more secure. So we have a long-term plan. We're also coming up, as Commissioner Coyne said, with a long-term strategic plan. And I went back through all of the information that we get. We got a 2012 reliability report. It's good. It shows us that we have a very reliable Board of Light and Power. You know, we've gotten the 2012 audit, which actually looks pretty good. But we have nothing in 2013. We have nothing showing us what the cash reserves are. We have nothing stating what your cash policy is, because from my understanding, the increase is that you want to have more cash flow. So you've asked us for these increases. You've actually asked the community. And I can't answer any questions to any community members as far as how much is for cash flow, how much you are putting into green energy, how much you are putting into capital improvements, the order of those capital improvements. Because I can tell you, we have streets that are over 100 years old. I can tell you when the public schools went to the voters and said, we have boilers from 1951. The community said, we can't afford this. Your plan is idealistic, but it's not realistic for what we can afford. And I strongly believe that. I, I can't support these three-year increases, but my question to you now is, what do you need? Are people going to get laid off? Are you not going to be able to pay your bill as far as the coal coming in? Where are we at? Where is the Board of Light and Power at now so that we can make a decision for the community going forward? Are people going to lose their jobs? I've gotten all sorts of emails, but because I don't have any of this data, similar to what we track with the city, I can't answer these questions. So it's, what it sounds like to me is, give us this money so we can feel secure. But other community members and other organizations don't get that luxury. They don't get to choose who they purchase power from. This is what they get. And I think what you're hearing is that this is going to considerably affect them while it puts you in a comfort zone. And there needs to be more of a balance. And that is why I won't support this plan. It's not that I won't support a rate increase. It's not that I don't think the BLP needs a rate increase. But unilaterally, this is a BLP plan to me. It's not a community plan. And I think it's time that we all start working together more, because there are other needs in our community, and we're pulling from the same tax base. So I guess the questions I have, what is your cash flow exactly? How much is this going to generate? What, what types of capital projects are you doing and why? You know, and where are you at? Where are you at? Because in one sense, I get that this is a crisis. In another sense, I get that there's a comfort level that you're seeking. And without this long-term plan, without knowing that you don't just want to put yourself, set yourself up nice and comfortable without what's going on in the energy world, in We Energies and other things in our community, I can't support this because I can't explain the need to the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Campanzi? Would you like the chair to try to attempt to answer some of your questions?
Well, I guess it depends on, you know, Commissioner Coyne brought up, you know, something that would give us time to get these answers. You know, clearly, I've stated how I feel. I will not, you know, support the proposal as planned. I think there's a lot to take into consideration, and I guess, you know, I'd be more willing to support a slow approach to this and, you know, something that we can come back to these, these organizations, larger entities or individuals, and explain what we're doing and why. And where is this going to get us in five years, 10 years, and 30 years? We can't predict it all, but we need to be able to say, this is the direction we're going. And I can't get that from the information I've been given. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, did you want to attempt to answer any of those questions, or did you need more background for...
I honestly believe, Commissioner Campanzi, that those answers were always already presented in the work study. You know, we have, what are we going to do with the money? It's a day-to-day operation. There's just a small list of things that happen, not planned, that happen, that need to be done, so the lights stay on. If we don't get it, we haven't thought of that plan yet. What are we going to do? We will have to put a rolling blackout in place. We will probably have to start laying people off. We probably will already delay coal shipments and get by on the bare minimum. You know, we'll do the best we can with what we're given. You know, is it what you see every day today with the lights on, the way it is? No, it's not going to be that way.
Okay. How much, if you got the 8.5 in year one, what would that generate? And what would that do to everything you just said?
In three years, I can tell you it'll bring us up to $11 million in cash. The first year, I don't have that number in my head. I'm sorry.
Three and a half million?
$11 million is the minimum. The industry says a utility like ours needs to operate on a daily basis. Minimum. Not the feel-good, happy, comfortable zone. And I, I just, I don't know what else I can tell you that would be different.
I guess...
Commissioner Campanzi?
What, I mean, that's, that's hard, because I feel like the public schools are hanging on by their teeth. And would they want a larger cash reserve? I bet they would. And this is where I have a problem, without thinking long-term and what the impact on our community is. Because what this is forcing us to do is to make other entities look at, what are you going to cut? What are we, as city commissioners, going to cut? Because if we vote on this, we're going to have to do a budget amendment. So I'm asking my fellow commissioners, what do you want to cut for $100,000 this year?
Thank you. I believe that the first year would generate about $3.5 million at 8.7%, correct? 8.5? So that's what your answer would be, $3.5 million for the first year. Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan?
I guess I'd like to ask the attorney a question. And that has to do with, with our responsibility here. I would say that some of the things that Commissioner Coyne has suggested would, would be a negotiation with the Board of Light and Power and would also somewhat usurp the authority, which is granted to them by the charter, to manage the Board of Light and Power and kind of put us in the position of second-guessing that management. But I guess for the attorney, do we have the authority to negotiate a rate increase, or is our authority to either approve it or not approve it?
It's the latter. And we've been through this. You can certainly negotiate if they're willing to negotiate, but they've adopted rates. And there's no going back on that. As far as this meeting is concerned, I mean, you can pass on them, I suppose, if you want. But I mean, you can't, it's too late to negotiate. They've adopted rates on their, at their July 30 meeting, and it's to this board either to confirm those rates or not confirm those rates. That's all the charter gives you leverage to do.
It's not our responsibility to operate the Board of Light and Power. We have the authority to approve or not approve their rate increase.
Correct.
Well, I guess, again, I just, I just want to emphasize that I, you know, I think we're putting ourselves in the position, or some of us, of really second-guessing the experts that they have brought in and the people elected to run this organization. You know, that's not us. That's them. And I, I really believe the only, our only responsibility is to find, to decide if it's needed. And it's very clear to me it's needed. I mean, there's no question about it. This is, this is a business, this is a business. This has to run like a business, even though it's a publicly-owned business. I mean, they, you know, they either have to do the work that's necessary, operate the plants, do the repair jobs, do the major maintenance work, plan for the future, and they need the money coming in the door to make that happen. And I think an enterprise of that size needs to have a cash reserve. And, and as I said, my main criticism would be for not increasing rates a year or two ago. And I think the other, I just want to say again, that this is, this is only a three-year rate increase because their board has decided to try to implement it in a phased-in basis. It's not, it's not an increase for this year and next year. Next year, it's spreading one increase over three years, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I think Commissioner Ryan has a point about micromanaging the Board of Light and Power. But there's seven of us sitting here that aren't brain-dead and are going to make a... But there's seven of us sitting here that aren't brain-dead and are going to make a decision on to approve it or not approve it, based on what we have learned about it. And if that's the case, then I'm going to vote no. And I hope they're getting the message, at least from what some of us have said, that maybe they could come back here with something that would be acceptable. And the longer they delay it, the better for people who now know that there's going to be a rate increase of some magnitude. So, I think you have a valid point, and I think that maybe it would be best to either vote it up or down. And if it goes down, then they are getting the message of what we're hearing, and it's up to them to come back. I'd ask the city attorney, is that a reasonable thing? I mean, otherwise, why, I mean, why are we talking? Why don't we just say yes or no, that you can't talk? We're not, I'm not micromanaging them. I'm telling them my concerns, basically representing the citizens and the city. That's, I mean, that's what I'm going to base my decision, yes or no, on. That isn't micromanagement, per se.
You're right, it is an up or down, it is an up or down vote.
Well, is discussing it, micromanagement?
No, you have the right to discuss this, like any other matter that comes before the commission. But it is an up or down vote on this issue at some point, and that's your decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I'm going to start with saying that, you know, I appreciate the previous commissioners' comments, because I think I agree with just about all of them. And I feel kind of fortunate, because I'm hopped up on cold meds right now, so I appreciate them making the comments rather than me. You know, over the last few weeks, we've had the chance to learn directly from the BLP in a presentation here and in a work session, what situation they're in. And I get it. I understand, I really understand it. I run five businesses. When you run cash reserves really low, you need that increase. And that I totally get, and in many ways, I'm in support of it. But I have a lot of concerns, similar to Commissioner Coyne's and Commissioner Kampenzi's, and I brought it up in the work session, that for large organizations, this is a huge chunk. This is maybe multiple full-time jobs for organizations, for people who are on fixed incomes under 20 grand. I mean, last year, my personal income last year was 12. And when you're looking at that, and you're looking at trying to make ends meet, that's really, really difficult. And I don't think one month is nearly enough time. And I know that the BLP has had a number of public meetings, but, I mean, we have a hard time at the city commission level getting people to show up to public meetings when we're discussing something heavy. It's good to see a full room here. So, no matter how public we try and be as government organizations, we know that this isn't on people's radar until it hits the newspaper. And so, now that it's hitting the newspaper, they're going to have 30 days' notice. And I don't, I don't think that's fair. In our work session, I brought up my main concerns, which is 30 days, and how it's going to affect both large organizations and people on small fixed incomes. I also brought up the strategic plan, is, as a city, you know, as the BLP is part of the city in the city, we owe it to our residents to be able to say, "We're planning for 50 years out." Does that include wind and solar? Does it include nuclear? I have no idea. But that I would not be comfortable passing three years of rate increases, despite knowing that they're needed, unless I see it as a large, I guess, couched within a large, long-term plan. And I understand that we need it on short-term, and I think Commissioner Coyne's idea of a one-year increase, and I brought this up at the work session, I think a one-year increase makes sense. That gives you guys what you need for right now to move on. That gives us the chance to be able to talk about what that second year is. Maybe it's less, maybe it's more, maybe it's smaller over many more years. I don't know what the right answer is. I know that you guys have looked into it, and this is what you've come up with. But I agree with Commissioner Kampenzi, that that's essentially putting the pinch on everybody else who doesn't have the same means to be able to raise their budgets. And essentially, we can only vote yes or no. But as elected leaders, we are the last stop. And I didn't know, really, how I was going to vote on this tonight, because I do not want to put the BLP at risk, in any way, shape, or form, because I think it's one of the best utilities in the state of Michigan. You guys do an incredible job. We have wonderful service. But at the same time, I look at the proposal that's come forward, and it doesn't give me confidence to say, "Okay, cool, go for it for three years, and, you know, when we got to raise rates later, we'll start having a discussion again about where we're going to be." You know, I support Commissioner Coyne's concept, even though we can't negotiate. I support the idea of voting this down now, taking on a one-year increase of 8.5%, and working together on a long-term strategic goal, and then, you know, dealing with another increase later, as needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I just wanted to explain, when I said "micromanaging," I think when we sit here and set conditions, saying we will accept a rate increase under these conditions, we are then taking out of the hands of the organization, which is responsible for managing the Board of Light and Power, the authority to do that, because we're putting conditions. They have said, "This is what they need." They have said, "This is what they need." And I'm not just speaking to you, Jason, I just have, I don't mean it that way. But, you know, and so, we're saying, "Well, we don't think this is what you need. We think you need something different." So, I think they've done their, they've done what they're required to do. They've said, "This is what we need to keep this utility operating." If we don't agree to that, then you use the term "at risk." It is this commission, which is then putting the Marquette Board of Light and Power at risk, because we've been told by their expert and by their elected board that this is what they need.
Thank you. Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I, you know, I look at the two, the two options that's kind of been laid out here. I can understand the dilemma of some of the large bills, the Northern and the high school in our city, and I can understand the need to plan. I'm not sure one month will do it, but I'd be willing to support that thing, that option. But also, I think, I'm not sure that a one-year rate increase is going to serve it, because what happens if next year, it's higher, or the third year, it's higher yet? You know, we're playing a game, and I think we're putting the Board of Light and Power under a, they need to plan, they need to be able to operate the utility. And we're not here to work, to, you know, plan in their stead. But I do have a concern about a strategic plan. You know, our city is, you know, as we've been talking about economic development, really, where we're at now with power, our manager has told us that we can't progress forward, because we don't have the capacity. And I guess, maybe Ed or Paul or someone from the Board of Light might be able to address that issue. And also, address the issue of, as Dr. Coyne mentioned, the city Charter does require that we do a strategic plan. You are part of the city, so you will really have to put a, an annex or some portion in our plan, a strategic plan of the future.
We have our own strategic plan as a separate entity, and that will be completed as the city requirements in the Charter.
Okay.
We're not completed with it yet, but when we get it done, we'll gladly share it with you.
Is that the one where you have the engineers looking at your facilities and...
That'll be part of it.
Okay.
That's just one aspect of the capacity study that we're doing right now, to see what we have, what we need in the future, what we need to go out and get. Now, there's, you start talking about future capacity, you're opening Pandora's box, because what I want to do, and what will happen, could be 180-degree different. You know, we talk about, where's coal going to be? Where's natural gas going to be? Right now, natural gas is the hottest commodity. Everybody that's increasing production is going to natural gas. We don't have the volume of natural gas in Marquette that we would need to do that. We would have to get a natural gas provider to either bring a line in or have some other option for us. I mean, that's something we're looking at. We haven't shut the door on it, but that's, is that possible? You know, we've done wind studies, to see if we could put windmills up. Every wind study we've done says there's not enough sustainable wind for it to be feasible. We look at solar. Right now, the cost of solar panels, what we would need, it wouldn't be feasible. So, we have to go back to coal, water, or natural gas. We have diesel. You know, diesel is a great option for us, because it's a quick start. You know, it can turn it on, but it's very expensive to operate. You know, we only operate when we have to. And how, and what we're going to do, we think we'll be able to increase our capacity in the near future. But how that's going to unfold, I'm very reluctant to tell you. It's going to be one way or the other.
But you are incorporating those discussions in your strategic plan.
That's a big part of our discussions, and how we move forward.
You know, I guess, you know, I can certainly see the need for the rate increase. I know that you need the cash flow, you know, if you, I'm not sure how you're going to fund one, the first boat that comes in after the first year, because my understanding that the coal boat's a little more than $3.5 million, if that's what it's going to generate the first year. But I assume you probably have a little left in your reserves that will do that. Certainly, there's unanticipated, we see the list of items up there. As I mentioned, I, you know, I'd be willing to support a three-year increase, and perhaps the one delay, and we're not negotiating with the board, it's up to us on how, what machinations we want to use to put in the rate increase. So, I guess, you know, that's up to us. But I'd be willing to support a hybrid of the two positions.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, in listening, I'd be willing to support that, too. A three-year increase, but not implemented till October 28 vote. I'd be willing to support that. I'd also be willing to just vote no, and have them come back with another alternate plan, either one.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, it seems we really only have one decision tonight. So, I would like to move, we confirm the Board of Light and Power rate design adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their July 30, 2013, meeting for the period 2014, 15, and 16.
Is there a second on Commissioner Ryan's motion? Is there a second on Commissioner Ryan's motion? Seeing none, it dies from a lack of...
I'll support it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Ryan?
I didn't expect it to pass, but I, you know, we've just got to move on here. This is, you know, this is where we are. This is what's on the table. This is the only offer we have from the Marquette Board of Light and Power to approve this rate increase. There are no other issues on the table. And the attorney is shaking his head, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'd like to move to table it until October 28. Is that within the realm of appropriateness?
It's a motion to postpone a decision on this motion until when?
October 28, which is the last meeting in October of the City Commission.
That's a motion to postpone to a definite date. That needs a second.
Commissioner Schneider?
I would support that.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Coyne, what else do you have?
Well, the reason I'm doing that is it would then give the customer 90 days in order to adjust their budgets. That's why I'm doing it.
Commissioner Schneider?
I'm supporting the tabling until October for the same reason. I think that it's not my favorite compromise. I think I've made my personal opinions clear, but I definitely don't want to hold the Board of Light and Power totally hostage to just saying no. And so, I think that this is a somewhat fair hybrid of holding off to allow residents and customers of the BLP some time to figure out how to adjust their budgets, and still not stringing out the BLP completely. I would still prefer to see one year, but, you know, I think this is a decent compromise.
Commissioner Kampenzi?
Just so I get this right, then, we're postponing voting on this plan, but basically, the plan is going to be the 8.5%, roughly, for three years.
What they're looking for, I believe, is to give businesses and customers a chance to prepare themselves for this increase.
So, I, this is a question for my fellow commissioners. Are we going to hold them responsible for anything? Are we going to have them come back to us with data? Are we going to just let it go and say, "This is our only duty, is to just yea or nay?" Because I think the community, as well as myself, we have a lot of questions. And this vote, we might as well vote on it tonight. Why are we putting it off three months? And I guess, I'd like to hear another commissioner, particularly, one of the two that made the motion and supported it. I want to know why we're putting it off three months. We should just vote on it tonight. If it's going to be the same rate increases, why put it off?
I'm sure you're going to hear some comments right now. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I yield my time to Commissioner Ryan.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan?
Actually, I don't have anything further to say at this point. I think, I do have a question, though. I guess, I'm trying to get clarified what it is we're doing. Are we delaying all action on this? Or are we delaying...
Do you want me to explain it?
Yes.
This is a motion to adjourn, or to put off the motion that you made to the October 28 meeting. If this subsidiary motion passes, the motion to move it to the October 28 meeting, then your motion will then be taken up as unfinished business at that meeting. That's what's, and so, what's on the table right now is this motion to postpone to the October 28 meeting.
So, I just want to...
That's the motion that's on. If that motion passes, your motion will be taken up as unfinished business on October 28.
I just wonder, does that mean we're going to start all over again, or that we're...
Well, your motion will be on the floor, and whoever seconded it.
Commissioner Coyne?
Yeah, Commissioner Coyne, right.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, in answer to your question, we've heard many people say this is a hardship to do it in 30 days. What this motion does is it pushes it out to 90 days, which is a quarter of a year, okay, three months. And it may pass, it may fail, but what the, if it passes, then they have three months in order to make the budget adjustments, and also pay less, they don't pay 8.5% electric bills during that time. That's the only reason to delay it. And the other, excuse, the other reason is it would force this commission to vote on it prior to two of the members leaving. That's why I chose that date.
Commissioner Schneider?
Also, to answer that, I agree with Commissioner Coyne, in so much as, I think, even 90 days, a full quarter, for people to be able to budget this kind of increase is valuable for individuals and organizations. You know, I think the BLP and the commission knows my feelings on a three-year rate increase. And, you know, partially, I hope that the dialogue that would ensue in those 90 days would end up being able to answer a lot of the public's questions, be able to bring more public dialogue to the issue, so that everybody is in full understanding of it, and maybe do a one-year, year-by-year increase with a long-term strategic plan. Even though, in three months, the decision is, do we vote the rate increase or not, that's still three months that there can be dialogue happening, and the changes might be made, even though we know that that's going to be coming up. As far as the rate increase, I'm not opposed to the rate increases, per se. I mean, I'm opposed to the way it's being done. So, yeah, when I look at, you know, full-time jobs being at risk because of this, it's far more about budgeting than it is about, you know, should they have this money?
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Again, I'm just trying to make clear, or get clear, because in effect, what you're saying is true. We are giving some people some time to prepare for this, but we're not giving the Board of Light and Power any assurance of where we're going. We're putting off their decision for two months. You know, they have a severe cash problem, and we're saying, "Well, we'll take it up again in two months, and maybe we'll pass it, or maybe we won't." So, again, I think you really have to think about, I like the spirit in which it's being proposed, but again, you know, we're putting this organization on the edge. You know, we're delaying a decision, and we're not guaranteeing that a decision will be made on October 28, or what that decision will be. So, I, you know, I think we're making it very difficult for this organization... So I, you know, I think we're making it very difficult for this organization to handle their cash problem, and, and, and they've got, got real issues they're confronting. And, you know, it's, you know, I know it affects a lot of people and a lot of other organizations, but, you know, when the power plant goes down, it affects everybody. Affects everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Kampanzi.
Well, I think we've made a motion, and we don't know how this motion is going to affect the BLP. We're up here deciding that we need to buy more time. What is that going to do to them? I think we need to get that answer. I would rather vote very clearly on this tonight so that we can come to a conclusion with them sooner and not leave this hanging out, not deal with it a week before a new commission is seated. I think this is very serious, and I think we need to decide, do we pass it tonight or don't we? And if we don't pass it tonight, what comes is an immediate deliberation and hopefully a new plan coming back to us that is acceptable. So that is why I will not vote to delay it. I think we need to deal with this now, and I think we need to vote on it now so that they know what we're doing, so that the community knows what we're doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne.
In answer to Commissioner Ryan's, we're, I don't think waiting three months, if we're, if this would, would re-raise three and a half million dollars, you know, that's a third of three and a half million. I don't think they're that much of a financial precipice right now, personally. And if they are, then they need to say so. But you're, Commissioner Kampanzi, you're comfortable with putting, if this, I mean, I have no idea whether this is going to pass or not. Are you comfortable with then the school system and Northern and a lot of business owners just having to bite it and pay it, right, in 30 days? Is that, that's, that's the downside to doing it now?
Well, I don't know if Commissioner Kampanzi really has to reply to that. I mean...
Well, my whole thing is that the rate increases, I don't have the data. I want to say yes or no. I don't have the data to say, you have a long-term plan. I know what you need for cash reserves. I know what your system growth looks like. I don't have that. The city does that. The public schools do that. Northern does that. I think we need to hold them accountable for this. This is like raising taxes. We don't call it a tax, but there's no choice, whether you're a college student, whether you're the schools, whether you're Northern. So I am going to not vote in favor of this because I want a clear answer for everyone tonight going forward. And then maybe this won't be a unilateral decision that comes to us. Maybe it'll include all of the partners. They've heard how it's going to affect them, and now how much do we need? How much do we want going forward to make sure the BLP is secure? This has nothing to do with me not being in favor of owning a municipal power plant. This has everything to do with accountability to our community, to city residents, to taxpayers, to the future plans of some of these organizations, to things that matter to all of us. This is not a unilateral decision. And that's why I want to vote on it tonight, and I plan to send a clear message of what I expect a municipal power plant to contribute to all of us sitting in here as we go forward and struggle with budgets and declining revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan.
Just one more legal question. Mr. Attorney, do we, do we have an obligation to give them an answer when, once they ask? Can we just put them off for two months?
The motion, the charter simply says they have the authority to fix rates, and we have the authority to confirm them. It doesn't say when that happens. They actually fixed these rates on July the 30th, and here it is August the 26th, and we haven't taken any action. So there is nothing in the charter that says when the decision has to be made.
And I guess I would just say again that, that my main concern, if we were just truly delaying implementation, it would be one thing, but we're just delaying making a decision because we have no idea what's going to happen on October 28th. And I think this really puts this organization in, in a very difficult situation. And they've, I believe they've made their case, you know, I have several inches of material, we all do. They have a cash issue. They should have raised rates two years ago and a year ago, and so I think they need an answer.
Thank you. And that's where we hear two sides of the story. One, one faction is going to be affected by $100,000. I just talked to a business owner that has a refrigeration that runs 24/7. He said that's going to be $11,000 added to his budget. He was looking at hiring two people. Maybe he won't even hire one now. And then you hear other ones saying how much it's going to cost them in the hundreds of thousands. And, and then you listen to the residents that are very concerned, that are on low income, and they are very concerned about the increase. And sure, we are, we're the lowest, and, and yes, we do have to raise it, but what we're trying to do, I think, tonight is, we aren't going to get the clear answer that we're really looking at for tonight, but maybe we'll have a clear answer on October 28th when, when we meet again at the commission meeting to address this issue. So with that...
Still have two motions to vote on.
Motion on the floor to postpone this, the pending motion to October 28th, that needs to be voted on.
Right. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't word it properly, because I know Commissioner Stonehouse was waving that he wanted to comment, so anyways, I'll turn this, the floor over to Commissioner Stonehouse.
Not to keep the conversation going too much longer, but I do believe we owe the Board of Light and Power a vote tonight, up or down. They are an elected board by the citizens of Marquette, each and every one of them. They are held responsible to the citizens of Marquette, each and every one. It is our job by charter to approve or disapprove of the rate increases they may give us. It is not our job to delve into it and parse it and chew it up and spit it out and come up with other or better ways they could have done it. At this point, they've done it. They've made a recommendation to us that we have to deal with. And I, I think just putting it in abeyance for, until a couple of months from now, does no one a, a service. We should allow them to either have our decision tonight or not have it. And if it's a no vote, then they're going to have to come back with something else. And if it's a yes vote, then we've done the best we can by our citizens. And it only would reinforce the criticality of who people elect to elected office. And if they're dissatisfied with the folks on the Board of Light and Power, then they're dissatisfied with them because they're the ones that made that recommendation to us. I would also caution folks, all those things that have been said about how great the power plant is, it is terrific, both in rate structure and operations. It is a model for the state, literally. It is, it is really the base of our economy in a, in a number of ways. And if you think of the one thing that makes the city work, it is electric power. Reliable electric power. That is critical to all of us, and to put that at risk, I think, would be very foolish. We had a great work session last week. I, I think all the information that we really needed to have to understand what was happening was presented to us. We can always ask for more because we are people, and we tend to think about, maybe there's different ways we could have done that, or what about this, or what about that? We can do that all night long. But the end game is, we have to vote their recommendation, up or down, and then we move on from there. One dichotomy is that I love to see the city and the, the BLP come very close together on our economic development plan, because there is not, and there never should be, a BLP economic development plan. That's crazy. The only reason the BLP exists is for the city of Marquette and the rate servers, and those two need to be hand in glove, absolutely tied together. And we need to make sure that we have a way of making that happen when we get our plan put together, their plan together, and we meld them into one tight body. Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne.
Well, the reason I seconded Commissioner Ryan's motion is he was just hanging out there. No one was willing to second it. I wanted to get it discussed, and now all of a sudden, people are saying, well, we should vote on it. Well, I mean, I, I wanted to get it out. I also wanted, if they did get out, I, I wanted to get some delay for the, the people. So I don't understand. I mean, I, I seconded it in order to get it on the table, and then, but no one else wants it.
For all the stories, be careful what you second.
Want to second it, then we would have voted it up or down.
So right now, we got a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Schneider. So commissioners, is there anything further on this? Commissioner Kampanzi.
I would like the motion read back to all of us, please.
You'll get that down in a second. Commissioner Nemi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree, it's, it's unfortunate that the BLP is going to be hung out there for, for a month or month and a half, but to, to reduce at least one-seventh of their uncertainty, I will vote for the motion on October 28th. So I'm one of seven, but hopefully there, there will be, will be others that will do too.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider.
I just want to state this publicly as well, after listening to Commissioner Nemi's comments, if I was to vote on it tonight, it would be a strong no. If I vote on it in October, it's probably 90, 95% yes. And I'm only saying that to make them comfortable with it because I like one year of a rate increase for discussion, and then discuss after that with long-term strategy. But if we've got, at least give users 90 days heads up, like, that's kind of the bare minimum that I'm, I'm willing to take, and if this is the route we've got to go, then so be it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan.
Well, and to see what you've just said is, just spells out what I was asking before. You're saying you're hoping to vote on something different at the end of October. That's just what you said. You said, because you said you wouldn't vote for it tonight, but you would vote for something. So you would vote for this rate increase at the end of October?
Correct.
For the three-year increase?
Correct.
Because you didn't say that a minute ago.
Yes, I did.
Commissioner Coyne.
Well, I'll join this stampede, and I will also vote for it in October because it allows people to have a time to adjust. Okay, and I assume you're probably going to vote, what?
Address the mayor.
Okay. I'm tending to vote for it in Oc, on October 28th. Thank you. I know.
Commissioner Kampanzi.
I feel like, I feel like Commissioner Ryan, right now, why don't we just vote on it? I mean, you think honestly that the people upset are going to feel better in October? That we just wait? Because what's going to happen, and what's happening now, are, I'm assuming these larger organizations are going back, and they're going to say, how can we shed our loads? How can we turn lights off? How can we reduce our electric bills year by year? Because we can't truly afford these increases. And three months, as you're just into an annual budget, isn't going to make a difference. You have to amend your budget. You have to cut things. So I agree with Commissioner Ryan. I think we need to just vote on it and send a clear message to everyone. Putting it off three months is just going to lessen the blow. I think these organizations are going to go back tomorrow, and they're going to say, well, we have three more months before it hits, so should we cut someone now? Should, you know, what are we going to do? Because they're still going to use the same amount of electricity unless they have started thinking about implementing a savings program for energy. You know, and that's the other question. We've got these rate increases coming. How many people out there are going to start shedding loads, reducing their electrical use, because this is such an aggressive plan? So how much revenue are they really going to get in those first year, second year, third year? I mean, there's a lot to think about, how you come out with a plan and the way you do it, and if you're truly concerned with how it's going to affect the community and not just put you into security immediately. There's a lot to think about. There's an awful lot to think about it. And I think we owe the BLP a vote tonight, and I think we owe the citizens a vote tonight, and I think we owe all of these entities that are here a vote tonight. I'm not interested in putting it off. I think we're either going to vote for it yes, some are going to vote no, and I think that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne.
Well, I have, I didn't make this up just out of my own mind. I have talked to people who are big users, and I heard tonight one big user say, even if you delay it three months, that would be very helpful. And if you take a quarter off of $620,000, to me, that's a very significant amount, and that's what it would be. So, and you take a quarter off of ours, $100,000, that's $25,000. So, I mean, it isn't just like I'm, like, making it up. These people who are working with budgets appreciate that, whether you're operating an apartment or a university. I think those are substantial numbers.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan.
Lighten the mood, there's an old saying that says, when all is said and done, more is said than done. And I think that's where we are tonight. I think we should, I think we should vote on these motions one way or the other and move on. I think everything has been said.
Thank you. Very well put. Any other commissioner at this time wishing to address this issue? City Clerk, would you wish to read that back to us?
Yes, Your Honor. There was a motion by Commissioner Coyne, supported by Commissioner Schneider, to postpone a vote on the pending motion to approve the BLP request.
Is that correct?
Excuse me, to a certain date. That is October 28th, 2013.
That is correct. Commissioner Schneider. Is this a roll call? Okay, then with that, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose.
No.
No.
Motion passes five to two. Showing Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Kampanzi as voting no. Thank you, everyone.
Your Honor, can I just make a comment? I think we've just had a pretty spirited debate here, but nobody raised their voice. I, I think this was a really good discussion, and we had a lot of different views reflected here. And I just, you know, even though I would have liked to have seen a different answer, I think it was a, a good decision, and I, I really feel good about the, the conversation we had here and the fact that it was, I think, respectful, and occasionally it might have got a little edgy, but I, I think it was pretty good.
So with that, City Clerk, you have the vote count, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do we go back to the main motion now?
The main motion will be taken up as unfinished business at the October 28th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Wow. What?
Okay, with that, we'll move to number two, presentation, Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority by Chair Kelly Holmstrom.
Over there, Kelly.
Do you have a PowerPoint? I wasn't checking my phone, I was actually going over my PowerPoint while you were chatting.
Chatting?
Brings back memories of, you know, old school board discussions.
So this is like a baseball game where the red light comes on, now, commercial's over. Anyway, as, as was announced by the mayor, I am Kelly Holmstrom, I'm the Chair... Anyway, as was announced by the mayor, I am Kelly Holmstrom, I'm the Chair of the Brownfield Committee, and we all had a work session here, so you guys are familiar with what we do. But I guess this was our time to come and officially announce it to the city, what we're doing. All right. So, we were established in September 2007, and basically, we exist to bring properties that are either contaminated, blighted, or functionally obsolete, and help with the developers to bring those online so that we then are using them. And the long-term goal is that we would be able to gain state capture, but we adjust some of those initial taxes to help bring those properties online. And you can see the difference at the bottom, that these plans have to be approved by both my committee and the City Commission in order to go forward. And the members of my committee are up here. As you said earlier in your meeting, we are looking for a new member. John Sprigarelli had to leave due to a change in work venue, so if any of you members, already viewing public, or people sitting in here that would have an interest in Brownfield, by all means, let us know. Financial obligations, development describes terms and conditions for the Brownfield tax capture reimbursement to include financial obligations of the authority. And it goes on, you know, bonds, and I know you guys have voted on things, and we're bringing more forward to you. The accomplishments for the past year is a recovery zone facility bond and capital bond improvement for Founder's Landing, so people have seen that, that development, you know, build and make progress forward. The newest one is an excellent we listed there, which is a work plan with Liberty Way Project, which is the old bakery over on Washington. And again, anybody driving through town has seen those things going on. We've seen a 24 condominium go up down Founder's Landing, an 84-room Hampton Inn. And I think the thing to take home from all of this is we saw down Founder's Landing, we saw a nineteen-million-dollar project creating new tax base for the city Marquette. And that, in the end, that's what, why we exist and where we want to go. And the goals for our upcoming year are for support of the expansion success of the Liberty Way, continued support of Founder's Landing. We'd like to bring a new project online. We have a couple of those that are being investigated. Successful grant acquisition for current new properties, and our Executive Director, Sherry Davy, who's here tonight, has had extensive background working with people at the state and federal level, and has looked into that. We look at promoting the Brownfield and the presentation we'd like to do at a national level for one of our projects. The bond issue plan for last quarter, 2013, for public improvements related to the Liberty Way Project consists of an approved Brownfield plan. And again, the Commissioners are familiar with this, you voted on this at the last meeting. And the one that we are, you've also read and heard many things about, and we're in the process tomorrow, we'll have another meeting, is the public parking development agreement bonding at Founder's Landing. We hope that we will be able to come forward with that, and there'll be building occurring at that job site once everything gets worked out. But we think we're making progress here, and things are moving forward. Questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Kelly? Commissioner Kevansy?
Not really a question, but I think since this has been implemented in 2007, I mean, it's really provided a vehicle to get some economic development going from the private sector, you know, utilizing, I guess, our powers as a Brownfield and the municipality that supports it. So I just want to, you know, commend you and, you know, the appointed members that we've put on there for doing a great job. I mean, I think, it's my hope that we will be a showcase in the state and certainly the nation for what we're doing. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Let me please thank you too, and if you could pass on all the members for the work they do. I know this is tough stuff, it isn't easy, but we do appreciate it, and it's critical for the city. Thank you.
Welcome. I also have another member here, Dave Kevansy, over here. My committee does work hard, and we appreciate your recognition, and it's one of the toolboxes developers can use.
Commissioners, anything further? Seeing none, I'll, Commissioner Kevansy?
Just one more. Do we have any prospects? I know there's an open seat.
No, that's what I, I'm throwing this out to anybody who might have an interest in redevelopment. We have, we put time in, but not exorbitant amounts of time. We're a friendly group, and so, anybody interested that, looking at this, or anybody that's sitting on the commission that thinks they know of someone who might be interested?
Thank you.
You appoint us, so, we're up to who you may, who you may choose to serve.
Commissioner Ryan?
Just to reinforce that, the group has taken on a lot of responsibility, and it's growing, and they are part of the city, but there is a kind of independence there as well. So this is not, not just, what do I say, one of those committees where you don't have much to do. It may not take a lot of time, as you point out, but it's a really challenging assignment, and if people are looking for something that has real meaning to it, and wants to accomplish something, this would be an opportunity.
Right, yeah. I mean, you know, I take like my relatives around town. You know, what are you doing? What's, what's your committee doing? It's very easy to take them and show them, so it, you know, it's a little more substance than some of the other choices.
Any other Commissioner at this time? Seeing none, I too want to thank you and give your committee kudos because you are working very well with the developers, and you know yourself how developers have been sitting around since 2008 for the economy to kick in, and now they're here, and you've been working with them hand in hand. So, we thank you very much, and tell your committee that I, my fellow Commissioners, thank every one of them for doing all the hard work that they do. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to number three, Market Area Blues Society Update by President Mark Stonerock and Member Walt Lindelaah.
Three years are going to be discussed in this conversation too, but I hope it's a little lighter. My name is Walt Lindelaah. Mark Stonerock, our president, is actually unavailable. Join us this evening for preparations for this weekend's Blues Festival, but just wanted to take a few moments and give the commission and those that are viewing and listening in an update on what's going to be happening this weekend. I am Walt Lindelaah, I reside at 437 MacMillan Street, and I'm representing the Market Area Blues Society, I'm one of the founding members. And this weekend, it's time once again for the sights and sounds of the blues to fill Matson Lower Harbor Park. This weekend's festival is the 10th anniversary of our event, and we are here this evening to thank the city, thank the City Commission, thank the city staff and all those who we work with to make this event happen, and all those who also come out and support the event every year. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) registered organization. We promote blues music and culture in Marquette and in the surrounding central Upper Peninsula. We have over 120 dues-paying members in our organization, and they're from all over the region, all over the state, and also some from all over the country. We host several events and activities beside the festival, both educational and social, with the intent to continue our mission statement. Our marquee event is, of course, the Labor Day Blues Festival, the annual Market Area Blues Fest, which is held every Labor Day weekend in Marquette. As this is our 10th year of the event, we have scheduled a free thank-you show for the community that will be on Friday evening. It's a little bit out of the norm, but it's non-ticketed, so folks can just come on down and enjoy the music, and it's a way of saying thank you for all the support that we have received from the community. So, we encourage people to come down. The rest of the weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, will be a ticketed event as usual, but tickets, advance tickets will be on sale Friday evening, right up until we close the gates. So if someone has a good time, please consider coming for the whole weekend. Since the beginning of the event, the society has intended the festival to be a regional event that not only draws patrons to Marquette, but also brings some of the biggest names in the blues world to the area as well. Now, the goal has always been, very simply, to present a world-class music festival with an affordable ticket price that puts Marquette on the map in the blues world, in the music world, and so far, so good. I would have to say that we've had some pretty good success with that, and what we'll do here is just going to hook up this microphone a little bit so you can hear it. We put a video together about a year ago to help promote the event, and we'll take a look at it here for just a couple of minutes, give you an idea of our intent about how we kind of do things and how to promote not only the festival, but the area itself. This Labor Day weekend, make the trip to Marquette, Michigan for the Marquette Area Blues Fest. It's two full days of live blues featuring the best in local, regional, and international blues artists. The festival is held every year on the Saturday and Sunday of Labor Day weekend at the Matson Lower Harbor Park on the shore of Lake Superior in downtown Marquette. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs and get set to have a great blues experience. Over the last several years, the Marquette Area Blues Fest has featured artists such as Lonny Brooks, Betty Lavette, Tab Benoit, Anna Popovich, Kenny Neal, Sean Costello, Tinsley Ellis, Watermelon Slim, Rory Block, Curtis Salgado, Super Chicken, Gina Cecilia, Morland and Arbuckle, Candy Kane, Bernard Allison, Anthony Gomes, and many, many more. You can clearly see why it's where Superior meets the blues. But the Marquette Area Blues Fest is so much more than music. Enjoy a wide array of delicious foods, arts and crafts, interactive artist workshops, blues merchandise, and of course, a fully stocked beverage tent with a great selection of local craft brews, imported and domestic favorites, and fantastic wines. When you come to the Marquette Area Blues Fest, plan some extra time to explore and enjoy the city of Marquette and its surrounding areas. Marquette is a vibrant community of just over 21,000 people and has been named one of the 100 best small art towns in America, a Michigan cool city, and an all-American city by the National Civic League. It's also a top-10 Michigan travel destination, one of the 10 best American cities to raise a family, and was named the number-one place in the U.S. to bike and live by Bike Magazine. Marquette's been nationally recognized by U.S. News and World Report, Forbes, Golf Magazine and Golf Digest, and even DisneyFamily.com for its natural beauty and quality of life. And all throughout Blues Fest weekend, Marquette's nightclubs and pubs will feature more live blues music for you to keep the blues party rolling on after the festival wraps up each night. With miles of beautiful Lake Superior shoreline, a mix of historic architecture, shops, galleries, museums, and over 20 restaurants and taverns that are all within walking distance of the festival grounds, the city of Marquette is a fantastic and friendly place for music fans to spend Labor Day weekend. So make the trip to the Marquette Area Blues Fest with a great blend of world-class music, food and drink, arts and crafts, all in a gorgeous location with an unbeatable atmosphere. It's so much more than just another blues festival. It's truly a complete blues vacation destination. Check out MarquetteAreaBluesSociety.com for more information. Plan your Labor Day weekend blues getaway today. Come on up to the Marquette Area Blues Fest. Now, with that, we've done that with the idea of being able to get the word out about the festival, and we've gotten responses. This is a quick quote here from NorthAmericanBlues.com, it's an international website. Basically, in a nutshell, they said that the festival is one to consider when planning a trip. They say that they can't wait to come back. We have also got some quotes here from people like Pat Black from the Marquette Country Convention and Visitors Bureau. "The Blues Fest is a fabulous event. Thanks to the festival, Marquette is a regional destination vacation. Hotels are booked, restaurants are full, and nightclubs are busy all holiday weekend." Brian Jensen with the Superior Oasis Comfort Suites Days Inn, "We've been a supporter of the Blues Fest for years. It's really brought in the people, and now many have become repeat customers of our hotels and restaurants." Lake Superior Community Partnership talking in one of their distributed magazines about the festival being the crown jewel, featuring the big name and regional acts and putting its stamp on the national blues scene. This was one that we saw just this year that came out from a magazine called Big City Rhythm and Blues. That's produced downstate, that is around the Great Lakes region, Chicago, Detroit, St. Louis. "One of the most beautiful music festival sites in the Midwest. Lake Superior forms a natural stage backdrop for three days of blues. National touring acts form the nucleus of late afternoon and evening entertainment, while impressive local and regional acts provide a fine array of quality blues throughout the day. Michigan's motto is, 'If you seek a pleasant peninsula, look about you; but if you seek a pleasant blues festival, look to Marquette, Michigan.'" So I mean, I couldn't even written that better myself, I have to admit. And that's the thing, this isn't us talking about ourselves, this is what people are saying. And that is, we've put together some demographic research, we do a survey every year, and in the last 10 years or so, give or take a year, we've found that, according to numbers put together by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're up to about 5,700 room nights in our community over the last several years, over half a million in new hotel revenue in dollars. It also brings over 1.2 million to the area in businesses that are around the region that the fest attendees have been visiting, and it's over $2 million that the Marquette Area Blues Fest has been responsible to adding to our community. And that's why I'm here tonight, is to tell you about the festival, encourage you to attend it, please, if you have the opportunity, even to just come down on Friday, check it out. But we'd also like to ask, the City Commission, as the current policy in the city is to allow for the reservation of a park or facility only one year in advance, the Blues Society is asking the City Commission and the city of Marquette to consider the possibility of amending that policy to enter into a partnership that will secure the location of the Marquette Area Blues Fest at Matson Lower Harbor Park for the next three years, 2014 through 2016. And a quick bit of background on that, the idea came from a similar announcement that was recently made with the city of Duluth with their annual festival, Blues Festival, which is known as the Bayfront Blues Festival, which is internationally known, and we'd like to get as big as they are, but they've been around for 25, we're at 10, and we would certainly ask that you would consider that. And one of our favorite pictures to wrap it up there with, from a few years ago, with the city skyline in the background. It's a great place for a festival, our artists say so, our attendees say so. We hope you can come and check it out. Thank you. Any questions?
You're not done with your story yet. You still looking for volunteers?
Absolutely, we are still looking for volunteers.
Did you want to put that out there one more time?
I will put that out there because it is true, we are always looking for volunteers. Anybody that does any of these events here in our community knows that it's driven by volunteers. It's a lot of support from the city, a lot of administrative support, a lot of paperwork, a lot of legal things to do, but the volunteers are the ones that step forth. If anybody is interested in volunteering, you can find us online at MarquetteAreaBluesSociety.com, or you can also find us on Facebook under Marquette Area Blues Society or Marquette Area Blues Fest, and we'll have information there on how you can volunteer.
I think I just volunteered volunteer. Commissioner Kevansy?
I just might. I think it's a great festival, just the names and the people that you've brought here. I mean, they stand out, at least a few of them, to me. I have just a few questions. One for you, one I noticed that the tent isn't being used, and is there a reason or a preference, or is it a cost issue, or is it just a not liking it issue?
We have a preference with the style of production that we have been using now. As I have mentioned to the arts and culture folks and people, and I'm speaking for myself here, as a group, we have chosen to stick with what we've been doing. But when I have spoken to people, we've had some concerns about sound with that particular venue or particular facility or structure. This is not to say that we may not use it down the road. I know it's getting used more now with events like last weekend successfully, but there have been a lot of unanswered questions in the past, including uncertainty of rental rates and things like that, that have made it perhaps not the most palatable choice, and that we have a feel like we have a little bit more control over doing it the way we do it.
Okay, and that brings me to some staff questions, and that is, recently, I did hear that we're going to limit maybe the amount of festivals in the Lower Harbor. Is there any truth to that? Is there, are we looking at changing the way we book events down there or allow them?
Well, currently, we're not. I mean, we're doing things as we've always done them, with the exception of private events such as weddings and private parties at Matson only. This year, we had, I believe, 60% of the weekends were taken up by special events. I think we wrote over 50 special event contracts this year, and it has become sort of a maintenance issue that we're. issue that we're discussing, which may lead to a park land use policy. So that's one of the things that staff has been charged with, is trying to understand what's the maintenance requirements of that facility, so that there's ability for the community to enjoy the green space, as well as for great events like Blues Fest to have a permanent venue down there. And trying to find that happy balance, because it needs to, we need to find it. And so, staff is working on it, which includes DPW staff that does all of the maintenance, community services, which does all the reservations, working with our great special event directors to see what's the best way to ensure that we can meet both the public's needs as well as our special events' needs. And so, that's something that we intend to bring back to the commission sometime later on this year or early next year.
Okay, because that's, you know, as people see successful events, then it seems like there's going to be more desire to use the park, and of course, you know, it comes with challenges. But, you know, like Walt said, this is in year 10, and it's turning into, you know, something that people watch for, people travel, you know, to come see, and so it's, I'm curious to see, I guess, the policy that comes out or that you recommend, you know, going forward, because certainly there have been things happening in the Lower Harbor for a long time, and, you know, what precedent or what order do they get? So, yeah, it's certainly a community space and one that everyone loves, but I understand, you know, the need to kind of, you know, as more people desire to use it to put something in place. So I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Mostly, I just wanted to thank you guys. You've done a great job. You know, you've brought an incredible organization to town and put together a great event. It's great to see that 10 years has been very successful. I also wanted to thank you personally. You've got your finger in a lot of pots, and, you know, you're calling for volunteers to help with the Blues Fest, and I know you need the help, but I also know that you're volunteering for umpteen different organizations. So both a thank you to the Blues Fest and to you personally for the work that you've put into the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention, Walt, that I was downstate this weekend at my wife's family reunion, and I happened to mention that in Towahas, there was a Blues Festival, and I happened to mention to someone, well gee, we've got one in Marquette next week. They says, "Yeah, we've heard about that." So the word's out there.
It is out there, yes. And it's definitely worth the trip. I mean, I will say that, that, you know, the facility is a great park to use. I understand why you'd be faced with the challenge of coming up with a policy now, because things like with the evolution of Harbor Fest now and all of that, I mean, you have a real diamond there, and it takes care to manage that. So we hope to be a good partner in that.
Any other commissioner at this time? City manager?
Just one question for staff. Do we have any other long-term contracts right now with anyone in the Lower Harbor? Or is it year-to-year right now? This is the first, I guess, request coming to us.
Right, this is the first request. We have had discussions internally, but it hasn't resulted into action.
Okay, is, I guess I'm asking, would there be any advantage to holding off until a policy came to us, or, I mean, how is, I mean, is this going to create more friction, I guess, putting one group on for three years and not the others that have been there 20, 25 years?
City manager?
Thank you, and I appreciate that question, Commissioner. That's kind of the crux of the matter. You know, part of that policy was originally developed because a lot of these facilities are very highly sought after, and so before the policy went in place, it wasn't uncommon for people to just put reservations many years in advance and kind of block them off, and it meant frequently as their plans changed, it would have an impact on the city, we'd have unrented facilities, or we would have a lot of different conflict in realizing those. But with events like the Blues Festival, they're receiving other kind of support from the city through the promotional ordinance, and as Walt mentioned, they've been doing this for 10 years in a row, the same time every weekend. And a lot of our promotional interests are much the same way. The UP 200's been going on for almost 30 years. Udon on the Rocks has been going on longer than that, and they always have a very fixed time when they do that. So from the standpoint of, they book now a year in advance. If we let them book three years in advance, certainly the venue is becoming more and more popular every year. It gives them an opportunity to stand on the stage and announce to people who might be planning their vacations a year or two out, that they can do that with some certainty of knowing when to do that. It really doesn't, the downside risk for us is if these events start folding entirely. You know, if the Blues Festival were to go away, or the UP 200 were to go away, you know, we might be left with a venue that wouldn't be used for that weekend, but, you know, given that they've been at it for so long that it continues to be popular, that's a pretty low risk. So the policy, when we come forward, is probably going to more be geared around what kind of things would we recommend allowing to have multi-year advanced reservations, and we'd try to probably link it into things like the promotional decision-making. You might not have that for weddings. You might leave that at a year, but that kind of remains to be seen. But those typically have a different kind of an impact. A wedding might be an hour, or a wedding reception might be four hours. Something like the Blues Festival is three days. So it requires a little bit more advanced planning and support. So my recommendation would be, tonight maybe, even though this is the first one, there's always a first something. I know they're getting eminently to have their event. I know it's in the Blues Society's priority to be able to stand on stage and say to everybody who attends, they've got some certainty in planning on spending Labor Day in Marquette for many years to come, and I personally think we could support allowing them to have a three-year reservation window as we come back to the commission with a revised policy.
Thank you.
Well, my only hesitation, because I, I mean, I would like to give longer contracts. I think it's one of the downfalls of, you know, places like Hoffman Auditorium that go yearly, you know, and certainly have to put the schools first over community groups. It makes it very difficult. My only concern is that we're going to approve this, and we don't really have a policy in place, so I see tomorrow morning, your phone might ring and say, "Here's X, Y, and Z coming to get on our agenda for next week." So would there be any merit in saying, "How fast can you come up with this policy?" Or, I mean, my only concern is that, you know, are we being fair, and are we looking at all of the groups that have 10, or 15, or 25 years, you know, and can we actually sit down and do that knowing that the Blues Fest wants this weekend, so that it becomes, you know, policy first and then action second? I guess that's what I'm asking, my commissioners.
City manager?
Thank you. Well, currently, the Blues Festival's the only one who's asked, so we aren't facing that immediate problem, but I don't believe the policy would take a long time to put together and propose. We certainly could have it together by the next city commission meeting if we needed to do it, but my sense is, after 10 years of doing it, there's not a lot of contention for this specific thing. If the UP 200 came back and said they wanted to do something in Marquette on a certain weekend, I wouldn't see that as being particularly contentious, but again, the reason we're entertaining this, I think, is because they're actually asking now, so.
Commissioner Coyne?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a three-year contract for the Blues Fest for the Labor Day weekend.
City attorney?
Well, this is not on the agenda to do anything other than a presentation, and typically we don't make motions in this fashion. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying it's typically teed up at a separate agenda item following a presentation, but just want to let you know. That's how we do it.
Thank you. I'm going to make the motion, mainly because Labor Day weekend is this weekend, and I think it would be nice if they could say, "We're going to be here for the next three years." That's why I'm, excuse me, did someone second the motion?
Just a second. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Now you have a second. You have the floor, Commissioner Coyne?
I pretty much said what I wanted to say.
Commissioner Amy?
Well, I think, you know, it is kind of odd that we put the cart before the horse or the promise before the policy, but they're not going to be able to announce it this weekend at the current fest. If we don't do it, then it would be, I think, if we're so inclined to approve it at the next meeting, it would be tragic for them not to be able to take advantage of the timing and announce it this year. So if it doesn't work out, you know, perhaps, you know, they'll get it for three years, no one else will, and we'll realize our folly and change the policy, but I'd be willing to take the chance at this point.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, my largest concern is putting a motion on the table, not putting a motion, but an issue on the table, that the public does not know we're going to be dealing with. You know, there may be people who have opinions on this that would like to share them with us, and we're denying them that opportunity. I think it's a good idea, and I'd certainly be in support of doing it, but I just don't think this is the right way to do it.
Commissioner Combenzi?
Well, I'm fully supportive of the, you know, the three-year agreement, but I, what happens, I guess the largest uprising that usually happens is when we don't follow procedure, and I guess I do want to honor that, but I do want to say that you will have my vote for three years. But I do think Commissioner Ryan makes a valid point, and that's, I just feel like, because we are the policymaking body, I think it's important that we set that first and then approve this and allow for any comments, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I want to concur. I'm a bit of a policy geek and procedural geek, and believe that I think we got to follow the procedure. I would love it if you guys could announce, "Yes, we're going to have this for three years," and I think that's a nice perk, but I'm not willing to forego the procedure of putting it together just for that sake, particularly because a lot of times when we have leases, we set up a public hearing, we allow public to come in and give their comments and views, and I'd like to be able to do it within context of policy for other organizations that want the same thing. Although, absolutely, I want you guys to have it for three years. I just want to make sure that it fits within the policy.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Would a reasonable compromise be simply to express the will of the commission that the park for next year be used by the Blues Festival on Labor Day weekend? And then we can procedurally play around all we want to with setting up policies and giving proper warning and start clusters and newspaper publishing and do these things in bells and whistles, because I agree, all of that's important stuff, and we need to do it the right way. But I think this is a group that clearly has demonstrated long life. They clearly deliver a wonderful product. They're great for the city, and if it's a Labor Day's Blues Festival, I don't know how else they're going to do it but on Labor Day. So I think we need to give them some assurance that that'll happen, and then with a grain of salt and a little bit of hope, we can make it work, and then we'll set the policy properly up in the foreseeable future.
So anyways, Mr. Lindelof, you could make your announcements without saying the commission has voted on it?
Well, we'll say that it's looking good.
There is a vote.
It's looking good.
We do have to vote on this.
Not trying to cause any trouble and any consternation for the good members of the commission after this evening's meeting so far, so that is just fine. I thank you and encourage you to all come down. Sounds like there might be some steam to blow off anyway, so hopefully we'll see you come down and volunteer, come on and check it out. Thank you.
No, we aren't done with you yet. Commissioner Schneider?
I was just going to say, we got ramped up from the first one. I think we might want to push this back to October 28th, but just for a little humor's sake, you should probably call the vote.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Amy. To Commissioner Coyne, did you want to say what you meant to say for your motion?
It's not going to pass anyway, so it doesn't matter that we allow the Marquette Blues Festival, the Marquette Blues Society, Area Blues Society, to use the Lower Harbor for the next three years as a venue.
Thank you. Commissioner Amy, that was what you had wanted?
Yes.
So at this time, we're not allowed to vote on it?
Yes.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
No.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pose?
No.
No.
How many no's?
At least four.
Okay. That motion was defeated, but we'll hope to see you Friday.
It's one of the better defeats that I think we've had over the last 10 years, but we certainly appreciate the support, and we'll get it hammered down, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. And with that, we'll move to city clerk. We'll move to number four, proclamation, September as United Way Month. City clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas the United Way of Marquette County, founded in 1943, set forth a mission statement focusing community resources to meet community needs, and whereas the United Way has raised more than $8 million through its annual campaign from the generous support of residents, employees, and businesses, enabling Marquette County nonprofit organizations to serve thousands of residents each year. And whereas the United Way believes in creating opportunities for a better life for all by living united, and encourages our residents to designate their United Way contributions to their home communities, and whereas city government employees give generously to the United Way of Marquette County, now therefore I, Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 as United Way of Marquette County Month in the city of Marquette, and further I encourage our residents and city employees to continue their support in this United Way fundraising campaign to raise $425,000 to benefit the residents of Marquette County throughout the year of 2013. Your witness here of I here on to set my hand this 26th day of August 2013. Signed, Johnny DePietro, Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. And with that, we'll move to number five, proclamation, September is National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas over 23 million people aged 12 and older in the United States have faced substance use disorder in 2012, and 4 million adults also suffered from a concurrent mental illness, and whereas treatment and recovery improve the community's welfare and provide a renewed outlook on life for those who struggle with substance use disorders, as does their family and friends, and whereas resources exist online and in our community to increase people's awareness about how substance use disorders affect children, families, and our society, and whereas such education is essential to overcoming misconceptions and achieving long-term recovery. And whereas to help achieve this goal, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Marquette County Coalition for Substance Abuse and Violence Prevention, MC Squared, invite all residents of the city of Marquette to participate in National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, DePietro, Mayor of the city of Marquette, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Marquette, Michigan, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in the city of Marquette, and call upon the people of the city of Marquette to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's theme. Join the voices for recovery now more than ever, dated this 26th day of August 2013, and signed, Johnny DePietro, Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. And with that, we'll move to number six, boards and committee, and welcome new member Kevin Piggott for Agent Services Advisory Committee. Kevin, could you meet me up at the lectern over here?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kevin, for stepping up to the plate for this and volunteering your time, and I, my fellow commissioners, thank you very much. And with that, we want to present this city pin to you for coming aboard, and also at this time, my fellow commissioners, we'd like to hear some comments from you. Thank you.
First, I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity to serve on the committee, and I appreciate doing so and looking forward to doing so. Certainly fits in line with my background as both a physician in family medicine, as well as in general preventive medicine in public health. So my interest is in... medicine in public health. So my interest is in public health and community health, and that is also part of my role at Market General Hospital. So again, thank you.
Very well. Thank you again, Kevin. That will move to appointments. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. This evening, we have consideration of appointments for Gary Simpson to the Sustainable Community Ad Hoc Committee, City Finance Department Representative for a term ending 9/116, and April Nyquist and Rusty Bowers to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for terms ending 6/116.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Schneider?
Move that we approve the appointments as read.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Always thankful to see people stepping up to the plate and volunteering for their community.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Schneider, to approve these appointments. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Repose, pass 7 to 0. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to public comment. Comments should not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in an item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Commissioner Schneider?
Thank you. Looked like you were reading something. I apologize. These are my opinions. McCarty's Cove isn't as laid back with all the changes, none of which are the result of a drowning. You're expending resources in the wrong areas rather than on preventing loss of life. The guards spend as much time watching the sand as the water. You're advised to handle alcohol on a case-by-case basis, Mr. DePietro. Instead, you tell middle agers and beyond who've behaved there for decades that they can no longer enjoy a beer. August 17th, a yellow-shirted man spoke to the guards at the North Stand for over a half hour while a small group swam within his sight at Pitnik Rocks, including children. People routinely swim there, of course, nowhere near any danger. The point is, Pitnik Rocks received less coverage than last summer. You're literally awaiting the next death. August 24th, another yellow-shirted man traipses through the dune grass with no business to be there. May Mr. Viata please tell them not to walk through the grasses that hold our beach together and to show their yellow shirts only when called upon. You're harming the atmosphere, both environmentally and recreationally. To the south, numerous residents accused the rowers of tearing down a strip of flounder's green space for their boathouse. August 18th, a couple brought the matter up out of the clear blue sky, and they were not happy to hear that not rowers, but city officials had assaulted our green space to keep vagrants out. The PD allegedly sent a request to the maintenance superintendent to thin the wooded buffer, bypassing the manager's authority, and you're ignored requests to entertain due public process before altering our green space in an area of great public importance. Many people abhorred the damage. Restore that swath to its former glory in an accelerated fashion and find out how such a breach of authority ever occurred. On the type of matter that the manager assured me was firmly in hand. We wasted honest tax dollars to pay our employees for no good reason, to butcher the very resource that the rest of us treasure. The manager was asked again to instill a sense of place into his staff or to make changes. This is another hard lesson of what proactive means and is yet another documented example of an entity being so focused on an issue that they lose sight of the clear picture. This chamber reeks of it. Mr. Ryan wasn't kidding on August 6th when he said, "I think we have to be proactive here and really start making plans. We kind of have to face up to the reality," end quote. I don't believe this day will ever come on land use matters with six current members, just like I'll never believe Mr. Ryan's August 12th comment that he no longer has any association with the mines. Here's another example of using a truth to deceive. He talks for a point of legality, not from the more ethical standpoints of influence and of right versus wrong. Be assured that his true mining influences are etched upon the public record.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. You're a Malachi Nate Market Drive. Strictly my opinions this evening. The skate park, young people in our community, rather than arguing and saying what everything is wrong in our community, they took it upon themselves, with adults, to have a fabulous skate park in our community with the help of the city and made it all happen, without complaining, without criticizing, without saying whose fault, who's doing this and who's not doing this correctly. Unfortunately, we have one pissant in our community that always knocks everything down, looks at the city commission as their personal whipping boy, and that is not acceptable. It really, really is not acceptable. Hides behind the First Amendment, does not even participate in the pledge of allegiance that is done here in the commission chambers on start of the meeting, sits, basically sits there, looks at the floor, does not participate, but hides behind the First Amendment to utter and urinate on others' happiness. This is not acceptable in our community, and I'm not even going to bother to argue with the person that, it's so insane, you can't argue with stupidity. And anyways, this is a fabulous community to live in. When I meet people in downtown that come from different parts of our country, different parts of the world, are looking to reside in this community because we have so many neat things to do, walkable, livable. And the presentation that was made by Mr. Lindell expanded on all the neat things throughout our community that the music fest, the different festivals that we have on our community. Rather than pissing on the rights of others, look at the positive things and continue the good work, and I thank you for all the good stuff that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Move to number seven. Commissioners, what's your pleasure with consent agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Thank you. It's your second. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, Your Honor.
Commissioner Ryan?
Short and routine matters, appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Ditto.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner?
Commissioner Kembansi is looking for recognition.
If I could just ask, on number C, I know we've got staff here, but I was reading through this, and it looks like a few years ago, the city commission did approve a building to go up on the corner, which was certainly spot zoning, and now this one has come, and it's recommended not to.
I would be happy to make sure that a planning commissioner is here at the next meeting to be able to answer that question, since it is their recommendation.
Well, I just, you know, one thing that I noticed is that it's, you know, the inconsistency, and certainly for developers and certainly for others in the community, it seems like not only do we do spot zoning, but we pick and choose who gets spot zoning, when and where. And I, you know, this is just another one of my pet peeves, that if I can't explain something to someone, why they, you know, in this case, it looks like the same person got it once and not again. If I can't explain why, as a commissioner, it would be nice if the planning commission could, you know, and I realize that seats change and there's been a change in membership, but I guess I would like to maybe make a comment to them that it's best to try and be consistent, and I couldn't find, I couldn't pull from here anything that really made it much different than the other unit that was approved, so.
Thank you all. I'm sure that a representative of the commission is prepared to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Amy?
In answer to Commissioner Kembansi, I think the planning commissioner was consistent. They recommended we not spot zone years ago, and we didn't listen to them, so they were consistent. We may not be.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's the city commission that's not consistent.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I just want to say, since I said this was all routine, that the reason this is, all we're doing is scheduling a public hearing. We're not acting on this matter. So I wouldn't want the public to think I said we were handling something in a routine way, which needs some discussion, because all we're doing is scheduling the hearing, so we will talk about it.
Thank you. And with that, I'll ask for motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to new business, number eight, city clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Senior Services, Arts and Culture Programming background. Since 2010, the City of Marquette Senior Services has partnered with the City Arts and Culture Division to provide free art instruction. The program offers seniors ages 60 and above with educational enrichment in a creative and engaging environment. In 2012, the Arts and Culture Division secured grant funding from the Reynolds Foundation to expand and improve program offerings. Expansion and improvements included raising the quality of instruction by contracting with professionally trained artists in a variety of disciplines and number of classes offered. Seniors now have many, seniors now may participate in classes twice a month in drawing, watercolor, acrylics, ceramics, fiber arts, and theater. Since 2012, attendance has increased by over 300%. Over 400 seniors have participated in the last seven months. The sophistication of projects and level of instruction have attracted seniors of all ages and economic brackets. Classes are filled to capacity and frequently have waiting lists. If approved, it is expected that over 1,500 seniors will benefit from this program over the next 13 months. To continue, expanded program will require use of local senior millage fund balance. The purpose of the local senior millage is to provide quality services to City of Marquette seniors. If approved, all programs will be at no cost to resident seniors. Nonresidents will be charged up to $10 per class fee. Nonresident fees will be based on instructor, material cost, and maximum class size. Residents will be given first priority. Fiscal effects, senior services is requesting a budget adjustment in the amount of $7,050 for the continuation of senior arts programming. Funds are available in the senior service fund balance. The current fund balance is approximately $270,000, intended for future programs, services, and needs to be determined by the city commission. Recommendation, approve a budget adjustment of $7,050 from senior services fund to the, excuse me, from senior services to fund the 2013-14 fiscal year for senior arts and culture programming alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, what's your, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I recommend a rather motion to approve a budget adjustment of $7,050 from senior services to fund the 2013-14 fiscal year for senior arts and culture programming.
Thank you. Commissioner Coy, second? Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse. Anything further?
Only that this has certainly proven to be a very remarkably successful program. I think we should reinforce it.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I was really going to say the same thing. It's obvious from the statistics that were presented here that this is a program that's really working. And actually, as we look to the future, you know, and we talk about senior citizen program, and we talked about the senior center, I really would like to see us put more focus on the program area, because I think it's not just what happens in a building, but it's what we can do, you know, in the community with seniors to provide opportunities like this. So I think this is a real positive step.
Thank you. Commissioner Coy? Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I certainly support what the senior center does and what the Arts and Culture Committee does, and I like the things they do for seniors, but I'm not real supportive of budget adjustments that come after the budget. This could have been brought at the time that we review the budget. In the future, we're going to have to do some major changes to center and eventually a new center, and that's what the fund, you know, part of the fund balance from the senior programming is going to be used for that, or the senior millage. We already give the, from the senior millage, we give the Arts and Culture Center almost $10,000 for the director's salary, $1,000 for materials, and $4,600 for rent, and I'm not sure that we really need to give another $7,000. And like I said, I do certainly support both of the missions and the activities of both of these departments of the city, but I can't support this request.
Thank you. Commissioner Kembansi?
Thank you. I will support this, and I'll tell you why, because I did not support the additional $5,500 for the Thursday night music thing. I know we already give money, and I do appreciate Commissioner Amy's comments, because I do look at the arts budget and I look at the revenue coming in versus what used to come in. You know, a lot of these programs, in my opinion, I think they need to become more self-sustaining. However, when I look at senior services and arts and culture programming, this is a municipal fit for me. This is something that not only do we have the numbers coming in, you know, but we're servicing, you know, hopefully, most of them are city residents. You know, it looks like there's a nonresident charge if they're not, but, you know, if you look at what a local arts agency is that's attached to a city, I mean, it's certainly servicing a large demographic in our area. And to me, this is a small price for how many classes they're putting out, you know, and there will be some revenue coming back in, but, you know, I think it's the start of, as we go forward to the Arts and Culture Strategic Plan, looking forward, you know, I know we've got the director here tonight. I mean, one of my biggest things is to make sure that it's somewhat sustainable, and it's not an ask on the city commission every year, because I think there's a way to really, you know, make sure what the city provides can not only provide these services, but also bring in, you know, some more revenue. So anyways, I'm fully supportive of this, and I like the direction it's going. But in terms of Commissioner Amy's comments, I would like to look at how much the city commission is currently giving and for what, and, you know, as it aligns with this community master plan for the arts, as long as it's part of the city, I think maybe from there we can start picking and choosing what really fits or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Coy, to accept a recommendation of agenda number eight and approve a budget adjustment of $7,050 from senior services to fund the 2013-2014 fiscal year for senior arts and culture programming. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed?
Nay. No.
Motion passes 6 to 1. Showing Commissioner Amy voting no. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number nine, fiscal year 2013, capital improvement bonds and refund 2003, founders landing bonds. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Background, on June 24th, 2013, the city commission approved a notice of intent resolution for the following FY 2013 capital improvement projects. Cedar Street, High Street, and East Avenue, $859,521 approved. Aloes Road and Altamont Street, $1,115,272 approved. Cure and Place Sanitary Sewer Pipe, $400,000 approved. Street Improvement Program, $685,184 approved. Powder Mill Road, $65,000 approved. Sanitary Sewer Lateral Replacements, $104,000 approved, and Bridge Repairs, $200,000 budgeted for a total of $3,428,977. Due to the Detroit bankruptcy filing, many municipalities in Michigan are postponing bond issues as a result of bond buyers not having confidence in the full faith and credit pledges in the state in this state. Those municipalities... this state. Those municipalities that are proceeding with bond issues are paying higher interest rates of up to one hundred and fifty basis points higher in some cases. However, as a result of our financial management strategy, strategy being in good standing, this proposed bond issue has been selected for private placement with Capital One Bank. This provides market validation of the city's sound debt management policies in spite of the challenges imposed on other Michigan communities. The city will pay lower issuance costs and a lower interest rate, conservatively estimated savings in the range of one hundred thousand dollars. The interest rate will be two point nine five percent over the fifteen-year life of the bond issue. In addition, bonds were issued in two thousand three to finance the, the purchase and initial infrastructure improvements of the Founder's Landing property in the amount of three million nine hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. There is currently two million four hundred forty-five thousand dollars in principal remaining to be paid over the remaining ten-year life of the bonds. This bond issue can now be refunded, which will result in savings to the general fund, net of issuance costs in the amount of approximately one hundred twelve thousand dollars. This averages to eleven thousand two hundred, two hundred dollars per year for the next ten years. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule will be produced for the FY two thousand thirteen capital improvement bonds upon closing, currently scheduled for September twelfth. The refunding of the two thousand three Founder's Landing Bonds will result in a net savings of approximately one hundred twelve thousand dollars in debt service payments in the general fund over the next ten years. Recommendation, approve, approve a resolution to issue two thousand thirteen capital improvement and refund two thousand three Founder's Landing Bonds. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Kevansy?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda item as read.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Kevansy?
I could just have our city manager maybe comment or, and expand on this. I mean, this really is a good news story for the city. I don't know if you or Gary might want to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, yeah, maybe, let me both do, because this is really a moment where I'd like our, our CFO to shine a little bit in the sun.
The CFO, is that Gary Simpson?
Absolutely, sir. I apologize. Our CFO, Gary Simpson, to shine a little bit in the sun. But certainly, everybody is aware of the financial challenges that are facing the state of Michigan, and with the bankruptcy of Detroit, that had, that has had some pretty huge ripples through the entire municipal bond market. And they're pretty severe. You know, there are some, some portions of the market that generally tend to try to paint the whole state with one brush, because it, it benefits them to do that. They can charge higher interest rates, or they can charge other risk premiums for taking on different kind of debt in the state. That's, that can be very substantial on, on communities. In the worst case, they might not find buyers for their debt, which means they can't go out and make the kind of improvements associated with why they wanted to borrow the money. So they can't fix their streets, they can't expand their schools, things like that. Or if they do so, they do it at really onerous rate. And those aren't, those aren't outcomes that most communities today would relish having. In the case of Marquette, because of our established track record, we aren't facing that. And so let me use that as a segue to our CFO, just to give folks a sense of both the bullet we're dodging and the, and the benefit we're getting from that strategy.
Thank you. I think, as been mentioned, it is a good news story. I really don't have a lot to add, other than, you know, this is definitely confirmation that, at least in the eyes of some of the bigger banks, we're headed in the right direction, that we shouldn't be lumped in with the fiasco that's happening in Detroit. Basically, what has happened, the emergency manager has delayed payment on existing bonds and is trying to pay off those bonds at, in some cases, ten cents on the dollar. The bond community is saying, well, we no longer have faith in your, full faith in credit pledges. And because the state legislature has declined to act one way or the other, that's considered tacit approval, that this is okay. So the bond market is in turn saying, well, we're not only going to punish Detroit, we're going to punish the entire state. As is mentioned in the cover sheet, communities are canceling bond issues. Those that are going forward are just getting extremely hammered. In one case, there was one entity that was going forward with a bond issue, and normally, they probably would have paid about two and a half percent. And they disclosed the other day at six and a half percent on their bond issue. So the good news is, there is some recognition that we shouldn't be lumped in with what's happening there. And so, in effect, we're pretty much getting a triple-A credit rating bond rate at two point nine five percent. So that's excellent news. This isn't just about me, it's not about Bill, it's not about any one person, it's about all of us here that work at the city, and it starts with the city commission. So we should all pat ourselves on the back that, that, yeah, we are having to issue debt, but the good news is, we're getting the best rate that we could possibly get out of this.
Thank you. Anything further, city manager?
Thank you, your honor. No, I echo the comments of CFO Simpson. We're getting the best possible outcome at a time when you could probably expect the worst possible outcome. And so that's a tremendous validation of the discipline that the commission chose to instill two years ago, and that we're headed the right direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I'd like to ask Gary while he's basking in the sunlight, would you explain a little further what the city manager just said, why we have this? What, what has the city done that deserves this?
Well, it's the years of presenting balanced budgets and sticking to them. We have a very strong fund balance in our general fund. We are responsible with our utility operations, just overall financial management. They do like the fact that we're trying to control debt service by, you know, limiting to basically four million dollars a year, bond issues. It's just really not one thing. It's pretty much everything that they like about the city when it comes to our finances. We have a very strong balance sheet, and they're just very impressed with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider, you seconded the motion. Did you have anything further?
No, not really. I think everything was said. This is a good news story, and I'm really happy that we're fortunate enough to be able to vote on something like this.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Kevansy, seconded by Commissioner Schneider, to approve the recommendation, resolution to issue twenty thirteen capital improvement and refund two thousand three Founder's Landing Bonds. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to public comment. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address if you hadn't earlier in the meeting when making public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time?
My opinions. August fifteenth at nine forty-five a.m., a cement truck unloaded the footing for a sign at the Lower Harbor Fish Cleaning Station, a surreal sight considering the manager had assured me of a public process prior to the sign. Adding insult to injury, he neglected to respond over seven business days to explain. This isn't to say the sign is a bad idea. I'd merely planned to remind you of how congested the park has become. Last Friday, the planner told me a public process is not state mandated. The manager still had the authority to entertain the requested public process prior to impacting our green space, but this assurance fell through the cracks. Just a week earlier, a narrow strip of our green space disappeared after the manager had assured me last summer that tree cutting implements would be removed from the maintenance vehicles. This authorized breach of his chain of command has led to public outcry. The manager was asked again to take control of our personnel to avert an otherwise imminent assault to the next chunk of our green space. Although the rowers played no role in the recent destruction, and irony is, they're preparing drawings for a boathouse in the very heart of the Founder's Green Space. August thirteenth, the vice chair told me to keep my mind, keep an open mind and to await the drawings presumably of the wooded site. In truth, any suitable plan would exceed the marvels of engineering. What's odd is, the two rowers whom I ran into said they liked the current storage area for their boathouse, which is the most logical site. When asked why the club considered the woodland, the vice chair mentioned the plants near the current storage area. Plants are a lot easier to move than trees. The prevailing logic makes no sense to an open mind. As in the case of the tourist park yurts, easier, better alternatives exist. If a vagrant is causing a problem in the green space and he won't walk out voluntarily, warn him that you're sending in a police dog. Use the dogs for legitimate purposes. Isn't that more sensible than tearing down our green space? Mr. Schneider acted intrigued by the wooded boathouse location in the tourist park yurts, and he hopes that ATV use can coexist with peaceful pastimes. Even more incredible is his recent abstention from important votes, because he's being funded by the same mine that he accused on January thirty-one, two thousand eleven, not only of environmental atrocities, but of violence. You can't make this stuff up. He'd shown such promise, when in the eyes of many, he cheapened himself. Mr. Schneider's paid to vote, and we elected him in part as someone who'd helped protect our environment, and he started out as such. Why the big change? He sat here for almost three years largely ignoring me while kissing up to two of the most threatening members this board has ever seen. People from all walks of life wonder what happened, and we beg his explanation.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. There must be a city ordinance for noise and air pollution. But anyways, last week, Lake Spear Partnership had a meeting with people at large at their hospital. And it's not a big secret, Gary was mentioning about contributing or doing two million dollars this past coming Monday, or today, I guess, for, for taxes for the city. He also threw out the caveat that they're debating whether to increase the infrastructure in the City of Marquette or go elsewhere. And so perhaps, in the background, and I'm not in the, in the tax negotiating business, but it might, somebody to behoove to chat and see where this dispute or controversy, or if there's a happy medium, because you hate to lose the size of Marquette General in the City of Marquette, because he made it really clear that they are looking at another site for future expansion, whether it is in the City of Marquette or outside, and they will make that decision in two weeks. Some serious conversation. And secondly, I do encourage you guys to approve the rate increase in, in three months. We hate to see blackouts or shut the air conditioning off in this room, or, or any of that nasty stuff. So I do encourage to increase the, the rate structure, even though it's painful and none of us like that. I don't like it. I don't think any of the commissioners like it, but it is a fact. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Turn it over to my fellow commissioners, and start with Commissioner Neme.
I have nothing this evening, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I concur with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kevansy?
Well, I'd really like to comment that, as Commissioner Ryan pointed out, we did have a fairly lengthy discussion concerning the BLP rates. And, and, you know, I, I do think all of us handled it well, even though I think some of us feel very passionately one way or the other. But I just want to leave us with one comment, and that is that, you know, whether the city bonds for something, you know, we, we have to get approval for what we do, or the seven of us won't be seated here, the city manager won't be there. With the public schools, they have to go, they have to secure a vote with the public. And the public sent a very clear message for their fix-all, you know, millage that they wanted last fall. Two falls ago, I think it was. But I just want to remind us that, that we are the check and balance for the community with the Board of Light and Power on whether or not we have all the answers. The community has the answers. And whether or not we can afford this, looking at everyone we represent, and everyone that looks to us, to be fiscally responsible. We heard it tonight. We do that very well. And I have no problem holding others accountable for that. I'm very supportive of the BLP, but I, there's always twenty ways to get to your end goal. And I'm not sure right now that what was presented to us and to the community is that. So I just want to leave us with that. I wish we could have gave them a more straightforward answer tonight. And I hope that as the months come, that we actually put some things into our motion that hold them responsible to not only report back to us what their numbers are, where this increase is going, but mostly for the community that depends on them. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick points, if I can. I would remind everybody that I, what I keep hearing the attorney tell us is that we're not negotiating with the BLP. We are simply in a position of voting up or voting down what they put on the block in front of us. We're not negotiating with them. That's not the role that we fulfill now by charter or by any other obligation. It would be very nice to be able to do that, perhaps, and to be able to reach some consensus and some decisions prior to these things coming to us for approval. But that's not the way the charter was set up. Again, as I'm getting this from our city attorney. So we need to be very focused on what the proposal is and what our actions need to be on that, whether we choose to approve it or not to approve it. I personally think we would be taking great risk if we do not approve it, simply because that by virtue of the work session, they went through very well with where their financial situation is, why the money is needed, and what the ramifications for all of us who live in the City of Marquette, who take our power from BLP, will be. And it's a pretty, pretty bleak future if we're not able to provide that source of income. Should we do things better together? Yes, we certainly should. Is that a topic for another time? Yes, it certainly is, and I hope we can get there. But that's not the issue in front of us with the rate increases at this time. I would also, just as a point of happy news, certainly great news on the bonding, I think is explained by both the city manager and our CFO. And again, just to, to really let everybody know that really validates everything that this commission, for the past five or six years and prior, has been doing in terms of financial management, keeping their eye on the ball, and trying to be physically conservative in a very difficult and challenging environment. That will only become more challenging and more difficult in the future. So, nothing further, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I'm disappointed we did not approve the BLP rate hike tonight. I'm as concerned as anybody about the impact on BLP customers, be they large or small. I had a lot of emails, actually, most were in favor of it, but, you know, the, those who were opposed to it ranged all the way from people who were students at Northern to the university itself. And so, yeah, I understand this is a concern, but, you know, I go back to the point, if we are going to have a municipally-owned utility in this community, then we have to allow them to generate the income they need, not only to operate, but to maintain those facilities for the future. We just talked about an issue of how sound financial management has paid benefits for the city. Well, there's a duly-elected board and a professional staff that's determined that this increase was needed. And for them to maintain a strong financial position, that it was essential to keep the facility running efficiently. And we kind of threw a roadblock in that path. So I'm concerned about that. I think everybody's concerns are legitimate. As I said, we, we had a good discussion, but in the end, there is a board and there is a staff designated to run that facility. It's not our job to second-guess them. We have a job of approving a rate increase. I believe they made their case. And even though I, as I said myself, it would cost me some additional money, I think it's money well spent. And on a lighter side, I'm glad to see the skate park is operating. I assume maybe something formal will happen at some time. But, but a lot of people worked to make that, and it's just one more unique little facility in Marquette. So that's, that's a happy thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
I just follow up on the comments about-
Just follow-up on the comments about the Board of Light and Power. My original thought was to kind of change the way that we would vote on this, and I really understand now with the explanation, it's a yes or no vote. And my concern was that if we did vote tonight, it would probably fail. And I think the compromise that we reached to allow three months, or two months really, and then a third month for it to take effect, it's two months till we vote on it, and I think it will pass. And I personally am convinced by their work session that they do need the money and it is appropriate. And I think the work session also convinced me that rather than negotiating over rates, that work session really showed, these are great people there. I think we need to have some work sessions with them to talk about their strategic plans, to have them understand what the needs of the city are, because very frankly, their understanding of our jobs is about comparable to my understanding of their jobs, which isn't very much until this recent meeting. So I really think that's an area where we can sit down, get together, talk about the issues, rather than, you know, negotiating and holding them hostage about this and that during a yes or no vote. So I would hope that in the future, we would do that with them, because I think it would be very productive for both boards. And I don't think that's happened very much in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. At this time, I'd just like to congratulate Heavy Equipment Operator Randy Bullock. On August 23rd, he celebrated his 20th year with the Department of Public Works. And also, kudos to the Harbor Fest people that had their this past weekend at Matson Park. So the crowd did finally show up earlier during the afternoon, and they had two great days of weather, and fun was had by everybody that was down there. And to remind everybody, September 1st and 2nd at Matson Park is the upcoming Blues Fest, which I think that they put a great show on every year. So anyways, that's one of the events I always enjoy, and hope to see some of my fellow Commissioners down there. And also, September 7th is the Sixth Annual Beer Fest at Matson Park. So anyways, if you're down in that area, there's a lot of vendors, music, there's a little bit of everything for everybody. So get a chance, take a run down there and enjoy. It seems like it's been getting better every year, so kind of look at, if you're free that day, stop on down. And also, I had the opportunity to welcome the Wisconsin Unit 116 Airstream owners that came into Marquette from August 15th through the 19th, staying at the tourist park. So I was invited by Board Trustee Jane Carmichael and Karen Sukis, both of Marquette, and they both belonged, they both own their own Airstream trailer. So there was quite a few, I think there was around 35 of them, having a camp out and sing-along and rally. So the fun was had by all, but not only that, but 15 Canadian Airstreamers that were doing the Great Lakes Tour stopped in Marquette and hooked up with them. So we ended up with about 80 of them at the campsite for two or three days, and five at the mall. So everybody really had a great time, and it was nice, as it turned in from a national to an international fest at the tourist park. So that was pretty nice to meet a lot of those people. And also, I'd like to thank the city of Marquette Public Works Department and Board of Light and Power, Market PD, Market Fire Department. On our quick response last night, or about 1 o'clock this morning, when that 40, 45 mile an hour wind came in with heavy rains and trees were falling down on some areas and landing on some wires, but we weren't as bad as the outlying areas. But all the city departments and employees responded very quickly to control everything. So kudos to them. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really only two things. I wanted to thank all of our partners who helped put on the recent very successful Water Safety Expo. We had Marquette General Hospital, the YMCA, NOAA, in addition to our own fire department and our water safety team, and Police Department. And it's important, again, because of course, Northern's back in session, there are a lot of people in town, in addition to our tourists, who sometimes underestimate exactly the dangers that they might face if their own capabilities aren't up to the conditions that might be prevailing in the water at that time. And so, keeping that awareness up there, asking everybody to be safe, and having the water safety flag shown on the beach was, again, a part of that sustaining commitment that we've got from all community partners, and we really appreciate that. The only other thing, Your Honor, I'd like to add is that with Monday being Labor Day, city offices will be closed. So if anybody has business with the city next week, please remember not to come down on Monday, and maybe reschedule it for later in the week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're adjourned.